You guys get anywhere? We got last meeting?
Yeah, we had a whole another pizza party.
We finally had a pizza party and I wasn't here. That wasn't very nice.
Uh, the time is six thirty one. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order.
Hang on, hang on. You've been signed out because your account signed in from another.
No money.
I feel like that might be cuz I opened my laptop and I logged into the town.
Well, so am I in two places, so.
Yeah, but that's why let me just log on to Zoom online and see.
I've been trying to find that magical skill of being in two places at once.
It's still running. DeForest, can you hear us?
Does it not need to be signed in to record?
Yes, I can hear you. You're fine.
Thank you. So this is still being recorded. That's weird.
You wanna stop the recording and restart it to make sure or?
I'll sign back in on this. There's something pops up there. I don't see it. Let me know.
Well, the time is six thirty two. We will call the meeting to order. Thank you everybody for coming out to the meeting tonight. Uh, first I am on the agenda. Well, second I technically is agenda review. We already have a pretty full. Um, agenda tonight. Um. Any of the other board members wanna move anything around on it? I don't really see the need to for anything. Alright, uh, comments from uh, the Chair and Land Use Administrator. Um, hi everyone. That's Mike Allen. Ryan, how was your uh, trip up the main?
Great, yeah. But I was very tired of the city after the couple of days there, but the conference was really good. I felt like they processed it. Really relevant, interesting, so um, at some point maybe we can do a recap of some of those things.
Probably sounds way more interesting than what we're gonna go into tonight.
Yeah, there's, there was a lot um, related to bylaw changes and stuff that will certainly be coming back around. It's awesome. And then the big discussion statewide is wastewater, how to handle that kind of stuff, so.
Get the magic bullet for that yet?
Hmm, not really. Um, but I do have a uh, something in the packet. The first thing um, after the agenda is a readoption timeline. Just sort of something to help you gauge where we're at. Um, it looks like if we can keep on track with, with this schedule, which I assume will probably be. Um, this is like short as possible. Um, i- it's possible that we, that we stick to it or it's another month or so, but. Um, if we wrap up housing and economic development tonight, that can go to the select board for their um, introduction to it at their next meeting. Um, and then it, it, it just lays that out for you. The different when the strikeouts are when we should have those complete here. Um, and if we go through all these chapters, um, we could warn a hearing for this board, um. I guess at the beginning of January, so it would be warned and we would meet and hold the hearing at uh, at some point in February. Um, pushing the select board meeting probably up to March sometime. So we'll see how closely we can stick to that, but um. I think we've got a lot of the pieces, the chapters sort of to a point, complete enough where I'm starting to do a little bit more of the. Larger overview, organization, how it's all gonna fit together and stuff, so we can go over some of that towards the end.
And i- i- if it's a, uh, just a consideration. Um, the, well, the fourth, roughly the fourth of March is election day.
Mm-hmm.
And the select board could be changing.
Oh.
So, so, yeah, it's, it's, well, I, I don't, I, 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 I don't know that it will. I, I, I don't think uh, Nathan McNaughton is, is going to run again, so there'll be a change there. Um, I, I, I. All right, I, I would expect Rika who is staying, I don't know, but I, I, anyway.
So that.
I, I, yeah, if there's any way we could maybe jump the gun a little bit, get a little bit ahead of that, wouldn't be a bad thing.
That was kind of another thing I was thinking about where we just missed a meeting earlier this month. I didn't know how the rest of the board might feel about doing. At least one more makeup meeting this month if we could try and squeeze it in maybe on the twenty fourth. I know we have the.
Next Thursday is that good night?
I mean, I, actually, the end of the weeks kind of work a little bit better on my schedule. Mondays through Wednesdays are very technical for me, but.
Wh- wh- what I just put out is this, let's say, let's, for, just for the sake of argument, let's say that Rika and Nate both go. Okay, that means you got two new members. We've already done two chapters up there and two of the, two of the five members are now gone. That, that listened to that presentation. I, and I'm just a worst case scenario is all I'm trying to do. I don't expect that really to be the case, but. Point is i- i- it may be in our best interest to sacrifice some of our time and get done and get this thing up, up there sooner than later. If we can. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, um.
I, I, I'll give you whatever time I can.
I would be very open for having additional special meetings. If we did them on Zoom, it might be easier for all of us to do it that way.
Is there any reason why you can't?
Yeah, cuz we're just gonna be going.
Somebody has to be here.
Yeah.
By law, somebody has to be here.
Okay.
But not everybody has to be here. One, one member of the board has to be here at least, I think, right?
Yeah, I don't, well, yes, I don't know if I count as a board member or not.
No, no, no.
I mean, I mean, if I'm gonna be able to show up, showing up here is not, right, right? I mean, either I can show up or I can't show up. John, you're not there.
Somebody will show up.
Yeah.
It, it obviously doesn't matter to me cuz twice today I've come to this building and both times I drove to Claremont before I got here. Now I come from that side, so. Apparently it does matter.
And, and I'm right there with you, Mike. Uh, definitely want to get this done as soon as possible on here. So that being said, how aggressive? Do you guys wanna get with these extra meetings and also what works in the time scale for you, Brian?
So I think the amount of time that goes into setting up the meeting sort of in some ways that defeats the purpose of holding an extra one. I would say we'd probably do better to try and fit more onto one agenda and I'll try and. Get as much done as I can and then we might s- say we'll be here a longer night or something like that.
What about option two of on a quote, special meeting, one chapter, that's it?
Um, what if we started at six or five thirty?
Five thirty.
Uh. It's very, I mean, it's not easy.
No, it's not.
It would be nicer than being here till ten for me.
Why second, third and fourth that?
I think we, that might be more productive if we were able to find. One of the meetings, one of the regular meetings to do a five thirty start and we could put a little bit more on the agenda. I think, um. I, I don't know if we're gonna be as um, deep into like the, the details of the text at this point, um.
I think you should just feel free to tell us when the time is.
Yeah, oh, yeah. How about I'll, whereas I work through things, if I have enough that it's worth warning a meeting, then we can.
Yeah, I think, I think it sounds like we're all on the same page and, and you kind of run the show. You're the, the, Herman Bailey here.
Yeah, I, I think, my concern is if we say we want to hold a meeting next Monday, that it might take more time than just putting it together and.
Right.
Well, in December, we have a free Monday on the twenty ninth. Which is really jamming it in there and I know that's right in the holiday season.
I have bad news on the, in my regard, which is that I'm going to Japan for two weeks, starting at the end of December.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, it is that. Oh, it's nice with a baby. I don't know. Ah, okay. Feels, I might be better off here.
Well, look, we just gave you.
Well, that segue is very nicely into mine. Uh, I have a se- a surgery scheduled for December the ninth and I'm maybe in bed for three weeks.
Oh, Zoom seems to be the scene.
There we are, man.
Yeah, I'll be looking great.
Yeah, I guess it's, I guess it must be winter. Everybody's getting work done.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, you can choose different avatars too.
I'm getting a tummy tuck, by the way.
Everybody's losing all the weight and I keep finding it. So, um, I guess we'll just gonna leave this at, Ryan, if you're finding the time for us. To basically, as long as we can get here either in person or online. Go for it.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, and, and maybe, even if it's doubling up. You, you know, to the best we can, you know, like, five thirty to ten or something. Yeah, that's crazy hours, but.
So, yeah, probably let's plan on a little bit more time on December first, um. That'll give me, I don't, I won't, I don't have much time this week and then next week I'll sort of focus on this and try and get as much done and. In the packet, um, so we can start to get through it. And maybe that'll have all of the chapters. Um, the, or the ones that we haven't sort of finished up. Um, just so the, the content has all been reviewed and then I'll show you at the end, um. Any other business, I'll so, I'll sort of show you where I'm at with organization, stuff like that. So I think it's possible. That we could get it done before the select board changes, um, but it's probably.
I would be down.
For our confidence.
On the first of actually bringing it back to five o'clock if we wanted to, even if that extra half hour.
Mm-hmm.
Would help so we get an extra hour and a half inside of this. I'd rather do it on the beginning than the end personally. By the time we hit nine o'clock, all of us wanna go home.
Okay, I'm starting to get a little fuzzy.
Yeah, that's why we make our best decisions.
It's quick.
Yeah. Um, and I, well, we would have the first, the eighth. And the fifteenth, I would open for all of those to start early if we have to. That will give us a whole extra meeting.
Okay.
And uh, if we wanted to pick extra days too, Thursdays work good on my end.
Actually, Thursday's the worst one for me. That's the only one I had for my band. Right now.
I only suggest the next Thursday cuz it's Thanksgiving. That was a, that was a deep cut, sorry.
When, 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 Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday, in general, I, I don't have any, I don't have a gig until the thirty first. So I've got all year clear, but we're working on new material and Thursday's the only night that works for the band for that. So that's, that doesn't work for me.
Let, let Ryan decide if extra days are needed. Let's try to do longer.
I'd do, I'd do a Saturday for crying out loud. Come in, get pizza and hang out.
Well, so for right now, let's plan on a five o'clock, yeah, December first. Let's see, see where we're at after that.
What we can get is from. We've got two done. We're gonna, we're gonna get four done tonight.
Ish.
Ish.
Eleven thirty, Danny. You got all your snacks.
Three snacks. It's a three snack night. We can go a little.
I brought them out to do. We're gonna be going. Next time it's Red Bull. Forever launch.
Oh, no, you don't want me to do that.
You may agree just now that the next one is on five.
Yes. Does that work on your schedule too?
Okay, yeah, we're. We've brought Postaff right away to the ni- next planning commission meeting will start at five o'clock and run longer. You know, attempt to get this done.
Yeah.
Okay, um, well, that was a productive conversation. Uh, comments from citizens regarding items not on the agenda?
There's nobody here. There is, DeForest is on line. I'm thinking Brandon is just a computer.
That's me. Yeah, I signed in. I joined the meeting.
One thing I'd like us to think about too while we're doing this, um, is while we're going through the town plan and then where we're gonna be coming into. This is me talking as a citizen, by the way, not the planning commission member. Uh, when we're gonna be coming into doing. Uh, you know, bylaws and, and different regulations is to also think about how the reassessment going through might affect people having to get more creative. With property uses. And I know that this can go down into a huge rabbit hole and I don't want it to turn us too far. Off of our plan here, which we already have to deal with, but I would think it'd be good to kind of have that in the back of our mind of. This is gonna be coming up and people are gonna probably wanna try and get as much out of their property as possible, whether it be, you know. A U Ds, B U Ds, things like that.
That, that's gonna have to stay in the back of your mind because you can't do anything until you adopt a town plan.
Correctly. I was voicing what was kind of going through my head a little bit on this and, you know, sharing it with the board. Wasn't looking for any decisions to open tonight, although that would be some of our fastest work ever. Uh, moving on to approval of the meeting minutes for October twentieth, two thousand twenty five. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes uh, with corrections if needed? So Mr. Beach has made the motion. Do we have a second?
Are, are, uh, I'll second. Are, are these the correct minutes to approve? These should have been at the last meeting that I missed. And in the last meeting minute.
We can't hit the last.
We gotta break it to. Oh, you canceled it all again?
Yeah.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, that's why the pizza was awesome.
Oh, I, I did not know that. I did not know that.
Did musical pizza have four?
Shoot. I mean, Joe, we have pizza.
So yes, these would be the first.
Okay.
So, um, Howard has made the motion. Mike has seconded the motion. Any discussion on the minutes? Very nice presentation on these. I appreciate it.
Just coming into it.
I feel like it captures enough, um. Quite well. Uh, one of the questions I kind of had for the boards on here was uh, like on line seventy seven. Where members agree to strike paragraph lines eighty five through ninety two. We can go back and look in that previous packet and see what we were talking about, so there wouldn't really be a need to quote what we were striking in there. Or do you think?
The line numbers?
Yeah.
We actually actually want them to look back at something. It would be helpful potentially.
Yeah, that, that's, it was only my thought, but I'm not trying to make the minutes huge at the same point cuz if we start doing it here, then it'd be. You know, as we're going into all the other stuff.
But, but you do raise a good point, Joe, and I, and I think it might be necessary to identify the copy. Uh, we, we, we have, we, we're going by a date, a revision date. I believe it's on the, on these copies, right? And you have a copy of all of them, correct? So I think that that should include the revision date. Because moving forward, you're gonna have a different set of lines that are eighty, eighty five through ninety two that say something totally different.
Yeah, and then that, that's why I was kind of like, well.
So if we didn't identify the revision that those are being removed from as we move forward to the next revision.
But I'm saying what packet you, you should refer back to. Right? I mean, since these are from a cert, these minutes are from a specific meeting, so those line numbers refer to the document in the specific meeting.
Um, one thing I could do is on the agenda, I could put the revision number that we're gonna be reviewing and then when she adds.
Yes, yes, that, that, that attaches it to the agenda.
Right.
That's, that's good. That, that saves her work and, and covers the problem. That's a good idea. Yep. Cuz I do think it's important that, you know, to, that I go look, if I'm gonna go look at something and say eighty five to eighty nine, that I'm looking at the right. The one that's relative to this.
Yeah.
Set of minutes.
Especially as we go back to look at it in seven years from now, but I'm not gonna remember which.
Seven hours from now.
Just nice to have the references on there, but all in all, I'm, I do really like the minutes and uh, the ability captures everything that we discussed quite well. Um, any other discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, I make a, uh, move the move bit. Hi, my name's Joe. I just learned how to speak yesterday. Um, I moved to adopt the minutes for.
You do? We already have.
Oh, we already, yeah, yeah, thanks.
I'll use all those in favor.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. Uh, all those in favor approving the meeting minutes for October twentieth, two thousand twenty five? I really butchered that. Signified by saying hi.
Alright.
Hi, any opposed, signify by saying nay. And any abstentions, minutes have passed. Thank you very much, Stephanie.
Yes, great job.
Okay, moving on to town plan, readoption, housing check. Um, Ryan, I've seen you put a good amount of work into this. I have graced over or glanced at it pretty. Uh, high level stuff in here. Um, all the data points, where did those all come from? I see the sources on that, so that's all updated. To where we needed everything into.
Yeah, this, the first half of this was really sort of put together by the regional commission. We asked them to. Sort of update all the data and stuff like that. So these tables and a lot of their explanation is, is from them. Um, and I forget when the last time that we reviewed this, but nothing has changed since the last time we talked about it there.
In re-reading this, I noticed line fifty six, that paragraph, paragraph fifty six is talking about the number of new houses we're gonna need to put in. I just wonder if that's gonna generate some concern. And maybe as long as we're prepared to say like, hey, we didn't come up with these numbers, but they happen to be in here. I don't know. It's, it's a. Feels like a complicated paragraph to explain.
Do you think that just by starting off with the Keys to the Valley Initiative estimates, that's not enough to sort of derail that? I think that it is kind of a placeholder because the state mandated that the regional commissions tell us what the number of houses are. And I guess those haven't come out yet. Um.
And it says further down line fifty seven, uh, updates to the amount of any reasonable promising housing targets.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, it is what it is, I guess. It just, I didn't have a solution to this. It just made me feel like. If I was a person who read this and hadn't been here, I would be like, whoa.
Mm-hmm.
You know, but that just is what it is. That's fine. No solution needed, but just. I didn't, you know.
Yeah, well, it leaves a question on, well, where are these two twenty seven going to go? Where are they coming from to?
And also like, we're putting, we're, we're, we're the ones writing this and the per- the person who's reading this is, is looking at us as the writers, not as, you know. Uh, I mean, you know, there's gonna be questions. That's what we're here for is to talk about stuff and explain it and that's mine, but just, I don't know.
We could start out with basically, uh, talking about, well, talking about housing and saying that. We don't know what the need is going to be in town, but Keys to the Valley estimates this.
Yeah, I guess some of it is, some of the bigger complexity is that. The way this is, like, the way the numbers are generated just doesn't line up logically. You know, they're like, you've had one percent growth for decades. But you need three hundred houses in the next five years.
Yeah.
I know, it's just like, it feels like something's disjointed and the reality might be that we just. Leave it the way it is and because we are in between reality and, and what is being told to us in this situation.
I, no, I agree with, I, I, I agree with actually changing it to historical, uh, more of a historical record. We can include this thing that says this, but we can also include a statement that says. Uh, although, uh, Weathersfield historically from twenty, from two thousand to two thousand twenty. Uh, only added a total number of households, right? That's what that would be of a hundred and three. In twenty years, we only added a hundred and three. So I, I, I think two hundred and sixty something in, in five years is, is completely unreasonable.
Yeah.
Um, it, it, it's, it's not, it's, it's, yeah, disjointed, unreasonable. There's a lot of words we could throw at it. Um, yeah, I, I think you can, you can put that, that thing in there, what the state says, and we just simply say, um, a- according to, you know, our. Um, figures and, and our. We don't see the town really expanding much more than maybe, maybe fifty to a hundred houses in the next ten years.
Yeah, it's hard to, it seems, I thought about like, I, that's why I said like, I don't know what solution is here. Maybe there's no one, but it seems like it's, it's a hard, um. Hard path to, to not editorialize, you know, to say, I, I guess maybe saying like. Though growth has been X, you know. I, uh, anyway, I don't feel like we should, yeah, adding some small disclaimer there might. I don't, you know, or maybe it's just not a big deal. It just is what it is and we talk, you know, we're there to explain it hopefully sometimes.
I like it to be on the record, so when twenty thirty gets here and the actual numbers are up.
Yeah, I guess that's part of it too is when, you know, it's like. In your, in the book, it says we're supposed to have three hundred houses, then we got twenty. We're like, well, we probably were supposed to get twenty in reality, like this wasn't a failure. This is just the way the, the things are working currently.
Legislature and reality are usually two different things.
Well, you can't legislate demand.
No.
You can't, I mean, if people are buying houses, you'd be building, but if there's no demand, what the hell you build on?
That's right, Howard. You can't legislate.
And the other thing too, if you look at the statistics here, in fifteen to twenty years, we're gonna lose forty percent of our population.
I, I, I can, I can see how you could take that language and say we, we need to alter some things in our zoning bylaws to. Promote the ability for this to happen, but that's really about, that doesn't mean it will or if it won't, it still doesn't. It, it, it's not something you can materialize that way.
Yeah, it just feels, right, I, I don't quite know. There, it's so complicated that I'm not sure what. It feels like a good place for like a very small amount of addition. I don't know quite.
We could come right out and say we disagree with the state's numbers and, and, and we, and, and we would, um.
St- historical statistics suggest this is unlikely. Might be simple.
There you go. That, I like that.
Doesn't feel like it's editorializing. It just feels like it's reminding people like, here's what it's been and.
You know, so twenty five, this isn't where we're at.
Well, wait a minute. They're, they're, they're doing their change from two thousand ten to two thousand thirty and saying that's two hundred and sixty four. So from that, we have to subtract. Then you, you do that hundred and four, isn't it, that's in there?
Yeah.
I think all the numbers are a little bit weird cuz they're all generated in different ways, like none, none of it quite, I don't know.
Thing that really sticks out to me on this is they say, uh, the need for two hundred and twenty seven new households. Now, right off the bat, you think a new household, you think a new house. But they're also saying that renter occupancy is gonna go down, but renters still count as a household in there.
And we also say that nobody can afford a house cuz people make sixty six thousand. You need ninety five to afford a mortgage, so that's. That was just, we do need more rental.
Right, and even in the, the, you know, the thirty year project or the twenty year projection down there, it's showing that the rent, renter occupancy is gonna go down when.
Because that's historical data projection.
Yeah, I feel it's gonna go the other way with it as people are trying to make their properties. More conducive to being able to, you know, afford it useful. You have all, who knows what's gonna happen.
The, yeah, the tables are all kind of generated separately, it seems like. I don't know. I think just a small disclaimer. Connecting historical trends, historical day trends to the future. Might just be this, a simple thing cuz we don't wanna, I don't like, I don't think we wanna change this incredibly much. It just. I don't know. Anyway, that's my, that was kind of my opinion on that.
Could it just simply go the Keys to the Valley Initiative created by Mel Scotty Regional Commission?
Well, no, cuz it, it's, that's not, the Keys to the Valley is just sort of a placeholder until the regional commission tells us what number they're actually giving us. Basically, the state is saying, we ha- we have an estimate of a housing need across the state that is this. And then they broke it down by county or I guess region, and then the regions are supposed to look at their towns and say Springfield. Si- is positioned to be able to accommodate this percentage of what we're being told we need to do. In reality, there's gonna be towns that, that decline. Basically, this is assuming that there's gonna be growth everywhere. And it needs to be spread out between towns, but, um, that, it's just a, it's just, you know, a very simple take on how. Housing could be addressed.
From two thousand ten to two thousand twenty, a ten year period, our total households only increased by seventeen houses. Period. Two fifty three to two seventy total. From two thousand ten to two thousand twenty.
Right.
That's, that's, so, so that seventeen comes out of there and, and you've got two hundred and, uh, ten, right? Yeah, two hundred and ten households now that you gotta build in the next five years to meet those goals. That's absolutely insane.
Right, and I don't think anyone is expecting any, but any town to hit any of the targets. It's just saying, we need a lot of housing. And some towns are more active about creating housing.
See, this is how.
Manchester, they, they did a survey of the town and voters' number one concern was housing. And so the town is, you know, working up, they acquired a piece of property, they're putting in a development project and all this kind of stuff. Um, building new sewer and, and water and all that kind of stuff. Different towns are interested in different things and, and certain towns own a lot of land. Um, especially like in downtown areas and they have a lot, we need to redevelop and infill and all that kind of stuff. And Weathersfield's not as sort of on the other end of the spectrum.
It's a different thing.
Yeah.
It's a different beast.
So I don't know how much it really matters.
Yeah, I, I think a little disclaimer like, hey, this is probably not reality would be nice. And then I just think we should not spend our time looking at these numbers and trying to make sense of them cuz they don't make sense.
Yeah, I agree.
But a little disclaimer there might pay off, just making us.
I think you have to because people are gonna go nuts thinking that you're gonna add two hundred and ten houses in five years.
Yeah, maybe people show up.
Well, yeah, stir that pot, right?
So, anyway.
Something in there about the fact that the man, it's only created fifty seven or something in the last ten years or whatever it is. But.
Actually seventeen.
Seventeen, yeah.
In, in years there.
I'll make that change. Um. So they did all those with the tables and then three point two, um, it goes into a little. So they did all those with the tables and then three point two, um it goes into a little bit more narrative. Um, there were a couple of town actions. Um, I took the old language, tried to understand it and just rewrote it in a different way, um which is why there's so much.
I have a question. Yeah, I have a question on one forty. The Scotty Water District is a municipality separate from the town. That's, that is what it is?
It is a municipality.
Yeah, cool, alright. Um, even, I have, I have a question on one fifty-four also, I think. Oh, yeah, one fifty-four, um, oh, no, don't go away. Uh, this leaves the rate and type of development in the hands of residents. And landowners to develop their land as they see fit, I think. Reminding ourselves that not everyone who's developing land or building stuff or doing stuff in towns or residents.
Probably just the landowners.
But it could be both. I mean, residents have a, have an outsized effect on town policy, I would say. So maybe saying both is worthwhile. I don't know, but whatever you think is right, I don't really care. Um.
You, you all set, Hank?
I have more, a couple more, but it's down, down in the policies if you wanted to talk about something.
Well, why not? That might come up a little bit. Uh, plan to meet housing needs, three point two, and especially talking there about um. Uh, the zoning bylaws subdivision regulations being established, limitations on how lots can be developed and. Uh, revaluing, reevaluing, uh will be reevaluated to assess the. What can be done to provide greater flexibility in development of land, which will ease process of creating desirable housing. Uh, and, and, and also further in here, it talks about the cost. Uh, as associated with zoning and, and, and the permitting process, it's, yada, yada, yada. So maybe just somewhere in that area, if we could have a brief, like one sen- a sentence, maybe two sentences. Um, that talks about or, or suggests that we simplify the zoning process. Um, because that's what it's gonna take, is deregulation. Uh, I, tha- that's the word, basically. When you overregulate, even through, through, you know, trying to, you know, make sure you have a permit for every little stick that, that's nailed down somewhere. Um, and I know we've gone away from that a little bit, but. To some degree, we're gonna have to ease the uh the, the process, the permitted process somehow. To make it easier to, to navigate, easier to get through, uh now whether that's how the language that's used. Uh, you, you know, how we said, I don't know, but, but something that just addresses.
Well, that kind of thing, there's a cost now. If somebody comes and says, hey, I wanna build a house. What does, what's the actual cost to them? I mean, you don't need building permits, you don't have any of those permits.
Yeah, the zoning permit fee itself is probably about a hundred dollars.
That sounds, that's.
Almost check, you're right, though.
But Howard, that's not, Howard, that's nowhere stops.
Yeah, well, well, that's, that's the question is, what other steps are required beyond that?
Well, the, the wastewater design.
Right.
Um.
But that's not a cost, that's the state.
Yeah. You're, you're saying what can we control?
Right, right.
Yeah, basically, the, the process.
I mean, it's a big cost from our standpoint.
It's, it's really the process.
Uh, I disagree, and I'll explain it why, as, as soon as I get a chance. I, I get, I get a lot of calls of, from people that are going through the process, uh that are getting, you know. Uh, it's a deal yard, it's a this, it's a that, you know, it's one thing after the other that keeps piling up that they have to navigate to get through. And their engineer costs are going up because of that. Now, I know that's there and I understand it, but, but, you, well, it is. How do we, how do we craft the language to guide of? Anyone, to guide anybody through it, so that they can get through it without having to pay an engineer to do it. Uh, it is, is, you know, so, so, so structure and language, um, you know, the package. Uh, uh, that we're, that we're, we're looking at. I'm not talking about getting rid of zoning, I'm talking about.
No, but I mean, the stuff that's out of our control, like the wastewater, I mean, granted, if we knew what they required. And we spell that out, so the guy doesn't have to shop around to find that information, then that's a benefit.
Um, a, a, a lot of things seem to spring up. And, and we talked about this when we gave, when we, when we gave up subdivisions. Um, and I, now I've heard, I don't know if it's true, Ryan can. Uh, to verify it, I guess, that, um. The chairman of DRB has required, uh, um, engineered. Um, stormwater runoff plans. We used to always do that with just the hand, that handbook. Remember, we attached the handbook to, to the uh. To the subdivision that, that you had to follow the practices in here, blah, 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 and it's all spelled out and that's it. So, so that's a step that, see, that's a step that they took outside of what we used to do. And, and what our intent was, but that's what they're doing. Am I correct? And, and that's a cost and a time and a waste, and, and that slows things down.
Yep.
Okay, that's what, what I'm getting at, is how do we, how do we craft our language with, and we might wanna look at that.
I think what you'll find is the vast majority of the objectives that are laid out are geared towards. Changing the bylaws to, to stop getting in our own way. Um, so I think it talks about a couple of specific things in the housing ones, but. The economic development chapter, um, and I suppose other ones, I can't think of the top of my head. That's sort of what. The, the overall, I think, uh. Direction that we're sort of guiding with the objectives is, is to reduce those barriers to things that we say that we want.
And, and I think we know that, and I think that's good. Is there somehow we could put a sentence or two right in that little section that says we're doing that?
What, what paragraph or what line are you, were you looking?
On in three point two, I think.
Yeah.
Somewhere, um.
They're busy down there.
Yeah. Uh, uh, Hank, I'll call it. The, um. There's eighty, the end of eighty-four, the last sentence in that paragraph, I feel like it's doing what we're trying to do. Well, maybe it's not, I don't know. It, um, I felt like that sentence did a nice job of. Uh, describing. Future changes positively. Changes to zoning in a, in a, in sort of a productive way.
They'll be reevaluated to assess what can be done to provide greater flexibility in development of land, which will ease the process of.
And, and I, in reading it again, it is a little different than. Reducing the burden on the, on the landowner, on the developer. You know, so maybe another sentence is warranted there. I, I don't know.
I think before we even dive too far down into that, if we jump down to line one oh five. It's already kind of been crafted addressing this in part three of that.
Mm-hmm, the development regulation should be simple and accessible and the permitting process should be easily achievable so that it doesn't function as a barrier. The housing that meets the, the regulation.
Yes, I agree.
That's not pretty good.
Yeah, I agree.
Oh, and the next sentence, the need to hire contractors or legal assistants to navigate the permitting process drives up the cost of development. We're nailing it.
Look at that, Ryan fixed the problem before it was even a problem.
That is really good. No, I think, I mean, I think that language is.
Yeah, it is. I agree.
Alright, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't argue against it.
Nope.
No, and it really kind of spells it right out.
My apologies, that, that's very good right there. It does exactly what I was looking for. Maybe I just expected to see it sooner, but it's fine. It, it's.
I, I like having it in its own little section. That way it's just like, hey, right here, you know, like.
It's one of the four things that we're calling out is actions the town can take.
And it'll look, it'll be close to the top when some of the red stuff goes away.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, we're kind of like Mike's point, though. I do wanna make sure that as we're going through on this. Even though you might not have to get a zoning permit or a building permit for things. In the requirements that are met for a lot of properties to go in, where you either have your stormwater, your screening. Things like that, those are all costs that are not permit related, but boy, they can add up fast. You go out and buy a bunch of trees and tell me how much that costs.
Unless you buy them from me.
I'm probably not allowed to say that.
Alright.
Little self-promotions.
Luckily, nobody is, luckily, there are very few people listening to this.
Line, line one twenty-five too, it talks about the one acre minimum lot size in villages. We rezoned all those to half acre.
Yeah, but it didn't pass.
But there's still.
No, it actually went to hearing it and it was shot down, so it didn't change, so.
Yeah, that, it was tied together with a bunch of things.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that was, I mean, there were definitely some pushback on it, but I'm not sure if that was the, the major one. Um.
Good. Oh, yes, that, that was some part of it, though.
Yeah. Um.
I think that we shouldn't just limit the non-conforming small whole lots to the villages, though, because, I mean, we all know I'm gonna die on this bridge. Uh.
Yeah, why, why shouldn't we? I mean, it's mostly a village problem, isn't it?
Wait, 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 what do you, what do you mean?
No, um, that were, Howard was speaking of the one acre minimum lot sizes in the villages. Where it said the increasing growth in villages, it's not just in the villages, so.
Yeah, that's where the problem is.
Is outside.
Oh, there's.
That's where the problem is. That, that was, is being talked about, is in the villages. Because the, the villages were small acre, small lots to begin with, and then they got rezoned to one acre lots that don't exist. Then, so after, yeah, you'd have small lots in other areas, but that's not, that's not the same problem.
Anyway, one seventy-nine. Unless you'd like to help, um. Anybody have anything further? Can we go to one seventy-nine, Howard?
The only other thing I saw was, so one, one seventy-nine is just the word off, because both, both is missing at the end of the line.
Where should we?
And tense, oh, affordable housing.
Yeah, I have that too. I need credit to this, this dramatic stuff.
It's a race to the finish now. I like that we're actually having fun while we're doing this for a change.
Uh, we've had fun, don't we?
Seems like a lot more fun today.
It's because you're drinking.
I'm new.
Not new.
Yeah.
One, one ninety-two, um. I mean. This seems, this seems complicated. One ninety-two, shift the municipal tax need to land uses that are income generating to ease the tax burden on residents. I mean.
I can do that.
You've got a lot of residents and not a lot of businesses, so this should theoretically be popular among the people who. You know, who are in, right, like if, but. Ah, just seems a little.
We don't have a commercial tax rate, so I don't know how you can do that.
I'll tell you the consequence of this right here. Home-based business opens up a whole new.
I just.
Potential for that, and I don't wanna see something like that.
But, 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 and that potential is there, so, we, and it's under the, the uh personal property tax. Which is assessed out of the Lister's office annually. If you have a business, you get a letter, you have to declare your, your tools, your toolboxes, your whatever. And there's twenty-five or fifty thousand, I think fifty thousand is now exempt, right? So most small businesses. Which you don't wanna kill your small business with, with an over, with, with a, a elevated tax, but we don't have a commercial tax rate, so.
This is green, what, this is new, right? So how, what's the story?
I think it comes out of the economic development chapter where we're trying to say that, um. Then the commercial properties in town benefit everyone because they tend to pay an outside share of. Taxes, they tend to have more buildings and more property that gets taxed. And if those businesses are doing well and are able to pay for their taxes and the businesses can expand, their taxes continue to go up and.
We're not really trying to, to tax businesses. We're trying to say, we should try to have successful businesses so that they can pay taxes.
Exactly. Everyone's taxed at the same rate, but the ones who generate money can grow and um should be taxed.
This, this.
So where is that gonna happen?
You mean, where our business is gonna come in?
What you just explained, explain it again, exactly how you did, and then tell me where that's gonna happen.
So like Daniel's Construction, Daniel's Construction is doing well, they might. Add on to their building or something. Their property value goes up because of that, and so do the taxes that they pay.
Okay.
And so if the businesses are failing, they're not going to be putting on additions, they're not gonna be able to. Um, maintain, there might be more deferred maintenance if they're not successful, their taxes go down. And the burden is shifted more towards the residents.
Home industry can do the same thing, if, if, if they have the space.
Home industry, so it's proper, is a.
And, and also.
Revenue generating use of the property.
But also if you added a pool to your house and got, I assume you'd pay more taxes to give a pool, I don't know. If you added another bedroom to your house. That's also good for the town. So this, the way this reads feels more specific. In a direction that would make me nervous if I was a business owner versus what we actually mean. What we really mean is like, we need to support. Businesses to thrive so that we can, we, they can grow, we can get their tax money.
So I think it's spelled out a little bit clearer in the economic development chapter, um, and all those, it, it discusses this point. More thoroughly, and the economic development chapter comes before this one.
Ah, so theoretically, people know what's going on.
But I thought it, we should just throw it in here because it is related to housing, and we're talking about housing affordability and stuff like that. One of the benefits is when the town is doing well and there's growth happening and businesses are successful, it benefits everybody.
Say it that way, then. Not this way.
I, I just, I, I think this idea is, is more complicated than the way it's worded, right? Like, it's not a, it's not a bad idea, but it's a, I mean, it's, it's a good idea. It is, it's what we need. We need people in town to thrive.
But there used to be a statement in the zoning bylaws that said, it is unreasonable. To um support the town on residential tax base alone. Remember that?
Now, that's the, the question I have is, so this is not a tax upon income. From the business property. It's taxed strictly on additions that are building or physical growth. Of the footprint, right under income.
Or the quality of the, the buildings that they have. The thing, basically, the way that the town makes its money is the property taxation. If you have a, um. A well-maintained building, it's gonna work more than one that's degraded over time. Um, and. If the businesses and the other properties that generate revenue are doing well, or even the residences. Um, with people who are still working are doing well and they're able to maintain their properties and things like that. That takes the burden off of the people on fixed incomes or who don't, um, who aren't generating that revenue.
This, this type of statement here to me, i- is incomplete. For me, in that, um, what I think it is suggestive of is. Uh, what I've heard called an economic engine before. In other words, you take an area of the town, you designate that as a commercial area. And you send all commercial activity that way. And I've been in a place where there was no home industry, no, what? You know, I mean, I could put my business in a, in a garage in New York, it's in a residential zone. Yeah, but I've got this, no, it's a residential zone. You gotta just put it over there. And that's the answer. And you're out the door, you're done. We're not even talking about it.
Yeah, but I don't think it has to be geographical, though. We can have an economic engine without saying this is the designated area. Um, it's still happening, like the homes, the home businesses are one of the major factors in this town's economic engine. It's just not as discreet when you look at the map.
And, and it's not as revenue generating as you might like it to be.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
But it is potentially adding a shed on the back of the, you know, adding another bit on the house so you can have a nicer office or have a.
Or built, or now built.
Or whatever, which is what Ryan's talking about here. I just, I think this sentence is the kind of thing that could generate. It's a little too blunt concern. Yeah, it's, it's, um, you know, if I hadn't listened to what you just said, I think it meant something really different.
Yeah, exactly, that's what I.
And if, and if this is actually, if, if this is actually s- somehow contained over an economic, let's just leave it over there.
Leave it up.
Just leave it over there. Yeah, I, I don't know that it does anything here for housing, really. I, I get, I hear, I get your thinking, and it, it makes sense, but I, I don't know that that's.
I think it would definitely create a huge.
And since right below, implementation objectives in the, in the economic development.
Who hopefully are gonna read this and might not. I mean, we might get away from, with this scot-free.
So the way it's written right now talks about income generating. As opposed to expansion.
Yeah, but those property uses are in generating income. As opposed to a person who owns a property who's not generating income. And the tax, they're, they're not. Uh, providing more to the town because they're generating income, they just have the ability to pay for their property better.
But what he's saying is there's, your, your interpretation of generating these common his. They're, they're two different things, but they can be looked at two different ways.
Alright, we're just gonna strike it, let's move on.
Generating income is you're taxing their profits, you know, kind of thing.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the way you.
Shouldn't we take that paragraph exclamation which.
All right, and, and anyway, you look at it, it is taxing your profits.
That's true.
I hate bringing this up over and over again, but um, do we have the actual definition of what affordable housing is?
Oh, God, I disappeared two earlier.
I, I.
Great thought behind it, I think it's lost our. Your default something.
Forrest, can you hear us still at least?
Um. Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I just can't see you.
You know, you know where I landed on this earlier, Joe, cause I, I, I hit the same thing a couple hours ago. And, and, and that is affordable housing is what you can afford.
Yeah, well, so, so basically, the, the simplified version is that affordable housing is thirty percent of your income. If you're paying more than thirty percent of your income on housing, that's considered beyond what is affordable housing. So in the state's definition, they have specifics about what county you're in, what the median income and all that kind of stuff is. But generally, the discussion, this is what they talked, uh, one of the things that they talked about at the conference was, the idea is thirty percent of your income. More than thirty percent of your income being spent on housing is considered on affordable housing.
But that includes property tax, whenever they go, so it's not just all, all of it, maintenance, rent, whatever it is, yeah.
Well, then I guess they better start looking at how much money they spend up there in Montpelier. Uh, be- because they're making everything unaffordable.
So where we have that, we're kind of, kind of bounce back to line forty nine where it's kind of discussed a little bit in here. And it, it says forty four percent of rather, well, renters in Weathersfield are considered severely cost burdened. They pay more than fifty percent of their income, and it kind of expands on that more. Did we just kinda? I don't know the right word for it, like I understand what you mean by like affordably, should be able to have a house, live comfortably, have your property, whatever, inside of it. But are we gonna regulate our ways? I don't know, I'm sure I'm.
You can't legislate affordability either. Four hundred and fifty dollars a square foot, you're not gonna build affordable housing.
Yeah. Am I reading it that far too much?
I think this is, that's just, that whole, that, all that stuff is just information that paints the picture that housing is a problem. That's, that's, I think we just leave it, cause we're not gonna. Change how much rent is, at least not very quickly. Again, some towns are very active on creating housing, and specifically affordable housing and stuff like that, and that's just not the role that Weathersfield. Government has been playing, so I don't think.
But we're labeling it as a goal of something we want to do.
What line are you saying?
Uh, one seventy six. It's here development regulations are not preventing housing options that accommodate low-income households, and then we get into uh from one seventy nine to one eighty seven. I, I, you know, one eighty seven or eighty six, the objective of work with Wyndham and Windsor Housing Trust to identify reasonable ways, that kind of gives us the solution right there. Now, I understand that we have to have, you know, something in here, like the goal is probably mandated by the state on this. But we're putting a goal in that we're not gonna be able to complete or really care about.
We, I mean, we were just talking about how we wanna go through zoning bylaws and make sure that they make sense and are functional and are hopefully not. Burden some, you know, like engineered, like hiring people to do stuff that, that maybe, maybe you could do another way yourself. If our regulations were different, or processes are different. So it's not so much that we're gonna solve the affordability issues, but we're going to do our best to not. Prevent it where we want it, so for example, that first one, the objective, um, this, it. Bring, goes back to when Oliver Owen had come in to talk about his property, this was a few months ago.
Was this the duplex versus triplex?
Yeah, and it was like, can we put a, a three-family home in this district, and it currently says that you can't. We probably should allow it because there seems like there's no reason to prevent someone from doing that, so those are the kind of things that, that the town can address. Whether or not they're gonna market that as affordable to anybody is totally beyond us, and it's not really our, our.
But I think that's a really good statement, that's exactly what it implies, we have no control over affordability here.
Right. But we, yeah. But we can double check and see, are we preventing certain things, and we clearly are, so we have room that we can improve on. But in terms of whether anyone puts it, uh, affordable rates is, it's not, it's not what we're, what we've been.
Yeah.
Planning for.
Well, the habitat group, you know, who's come into this town since I've been on the board, looking to build affordable housing. There's no money in it for the devils, you're not gonna build it.
Mm-hmm.
That is the truth right there.
Um. Well, we had the motel. They burnt down and they wanted to put that back in and double its size, and people come out en masse to stop it.
Well, we're also not a town that's really well positioned for affordable housing, cause we're not close to most services and transportation and all the kind of things that typically are associated with. Affordable housing, people need to be able to walk to the grocery store and that kind of stuff like. Um.
Only?
So as long as we're not doing something that's preventing the few types of affordable housing that we can, like if we had a bylaw that says no. Mobile homes or something like that, you can't do it anyway, but just as an example, that's one of the types of affordable housing that's available to people in this town.
Right.
Uh, so as long as we're not preventing it, then I think we're doing.
And, and, and those other projects like you, you're talking about with, with affordable housing, like condos or apartment buildings, whatever, they don't have the infrastructure.
Yeah, we don't have the infrastructure, we don't, we don't even have like the financial framework that towns utilize in terms of revolving loans and stuff like that, so.
So this is pretty well wrapped up then.
I think so.
That's pretty good.
I don't have any more comments or anything on it, um, great job for this round, thank you.
So I'll make those minor changes and then call it a clean copy, and this'll be one that will go to the select board at their next level.
Awesome. Job, everyone.
Okay, let's move on.
Economic development, number seven.
Okay, we talked about this one last meeting, uh, Mary Go Branson was here, and we talked about two sessions that we struck. Um, and then I thought there was a third minor change, uh. There's an addition to one of the objectives, the town should work to update studies, reports, and inventories described through the town plan, throughout the town plan, to keep data relevant. Um.
Where, where was that?
That was line two fourteen. So those are the only three changes we had said we have a pretty close to clean, um, and after this is a clean copy, if you wanted to see it that way.
I'm good with it.
Yep.
We're familiar, yeah, we were pretty much through that one to begin with.
Yeah, I appreciate the input that Mary gave us on that too.
Yep.
Uh.
Thank you, Mary. She's not on there.
Let it forever be memorialized. So any more discussion on that? I think we're all good, clean copy ready, going to the select board on the twenty fourth. That's two down, moving on to transportation.
And we have one.
We have transportation down, that's great.
We have one.
So you probably haven't seen it, I added it to the packet just before the meeting here, but so it should be on your iPads.
So you have to refresh, I guess?
Um.
Go back.
If you already had it open.
I do. I, I, I get it, cause I opened it at home.
Yeah, if you exit out, reopen it.
And just redo, uh, we, so just do the packet again, that should be.
Yeah, it should be reopening.
Okay, and be in the right order?
Should be.
Awesome, there, good job. Thirty four? Thank you. Transportation, there it is. So Ray pretty much did this, Ray and I sat down, uh, we spent about two hours going over the um existing transportation chapter, um, um. There was a lot of um language in there that was just. Battling and completely unnecessary, and he did not like it, and he basically, he rewrote this. Um, and he sent it out, this actually went out to Brian, I think brought the, the, the. Yellow that's in there, I think is from Brian, right? But I'm sure it's just a draft text, charts. Okay, um, so, I, I mean, it is what it is, uh, if, if you read through it, it's pretty straightforward, Ray organized it, and. Was basically trying to get where uh thi- this works for him and, and grant programs and um. Implies with um the requirements of the uh statutes, um, so. Uh, I, 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 I don't know that we had, had a clean, we might hit a clean copy with it tonight, um, but it might need some changes, I don't know, tell me what you think. Tell Ray what, what you think.
Well, knowing Ray, he went through this and made sure every opportunity we have for grant is in here, cause I know he has to refer to that a lot.
Um. There's, there's, there's a master plan, uh, there's, there's, there's something similar, and I think it comes out of Mark. Um, that we had to be compliant with, uh, you know, and he's, and he's trying to be compliant with the town's goals, you know, you know, um.
No, I was just referring to like the simple, like one sentence things that make it so work.
It's, it's, yeah, on, and, and every aspect, that's what he did, so, and, and he basically, he turned this down to saying this is, there was a lot of language in there that you actually couldn't have. You know, it's like, um, we're gonna do this to regulate traffic on this road, no, you're not, Ben was like, uh-huh, you can't do that. So, you know, that stuff had to go. Um, so, so this is what he wrote, and um. I'll be honest, I, I, this copy I haven't spent a lot of time on, um, so. Uh, I mean.
Looks pretty clean.
It, it is.
He does a nice job.
Yeah, very clean and fact-based here.
I'm glad to see they eliminated that high crash. Report or whatever.
Uh-huh.
So.
Um, so, so. Um. Maybe we need to look at this, read it through, yeah, and, 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 and see what we go up with at the next meeting, but, but we have one.
I have one question here, and this uh kind of goes back to something we've touched on many a times with um lighting underneath the interstate. Uh, in that area, we have a set, I. Maybe I just haven't seen it in here, is there a section talking about, um. You know, street lighting and something like that, should we have that? Is this even the place for it? Would it open up then, you know, the potentials for, and hey, B Trans, would you please do this?
Yeah, I don't think, I don't, I don't think this document is talking like that at all.
Okay.
You know, I don't have any street lights in the, the, the intersection we're talking about, the entrance ramp.
Yeah.
Today, or whatever, it's a state road. So we don't have any real control over it.
We can do what you said, we can say, could we please, and the state's gonna say, yeah.
But, but we got a real nice little sidewalk now down there.
I, I agree, I agree, the, the person in front of me tonight is having trouble seeing that, um, to, to find where it is, to turn north from.
I just wasn't sure if this was a place that it could be mentioned, or if it would be useful, or if it's like, again, like, say, could we please have that, and.
Yeah, see, there's not a lot of that kind of. Pardon me, blah, 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 in this document, Ray wrote this document to identify what a road is, um, what maintenance is, um.
So it's not the place for it.
Well, I'm not saying that, I, I'm not saying that, oh, I. Uh, maybe we need to take the, the next week to read it through it and be ready at the next meeting. For this one, we might, we might end up with a clean document at the next, at the next meeting, it'll be done. With this, or he might wanna add something like that.
One place that it might come up is in the economic development chapter, we talk about the interchange corridor master plan. And that, that seems like that master plan or discussions about that plan and, you know, things going on over there, that's, that might be a place where that fits.
Place for it.
Or it could be something for a future amendment down the road, cause we just need to get this done.
Exactly.
You, you know how you buy something in, in the, in the store, and it comes with instructions on how to assemble it?
Oh, is that?
That's what the styling on you is. This document is, is like an assembly document, tells you, this is what you got, this is, these.
It's not translated from Chinese.
It's, yeah, it is, yes, exactly.
I went through that with some seat covers.
It, it, it's not stopping in the middle to tell you how you might wanna use this or where you might wanna put it in your house, uh, it's, it's just telling you what it is and how to put it together.
I guess that pretty much sums up that question I had.
I think, boy, I'll tell you, this is the cleanest copy I've seen for, for a first draft, in case of, seriously, it's, I can't see anything here I would change.
I, I give Ray full credit.
I don't get anything?
Not yet, I'm only halfway through though.
I'd love to see it adopted tonight, pass all three of these through. I'm not opposed to that, I'm certainly not in a position to second-guess Ray, and you know, and you looked at this, you've gone over with him, so.
I, I went through the original document and took, took, broke it down to this.
Yep.
Uh, and understood exactly what he was talking about.
If we bring it to the select board, you and potentially Ray could present it, and then it's, we still have time to make changes if we want to.
We have, yes.
So, so if we wanna say we're good with this to, to go to the slide board, just to get one more up there?
I'm good.
We could do that, we can make changes again afterwards.
We're trying to move this thing along, we could do it.
I have, I'm gonna lean more on Ray for this, because he wrote it and he could explain it very, very quickly, very easily, where I would probably turn it upside down, as I already have. You know me.
Well, yeah, I'd say we set this all up, but.
I'm good with it.
Yep.
That's, that's three of them right there. I, I think this, this one here, because of the way it's written, I think this one moves through quickly. I, I think housing. I think economic development will go quickly as it did for us, housing, I think is still gonna be the sticky one. Uh, 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 but, but even at, at the zoning board, they're really just presentation, at the slackboard, it's just presentations, it's not really the time for all those questions. Take it, take it home, read it, learn about it, be ready for the hearings later on, that's the idea. So I, I don't see why three of them couldn't go at once. DeForest, what do you think? We can handle it, can't we?
Of course we can.
All right, it was, it is good, um, it is good to get feedback, though I don't see, I agree that I doubt we get much feedback on this one.
Well, and we wanna give Brian a chance to look at it, and he probably has some comments too, so it, maybe it comes back up at our next meeting here, but we can at least provide it to the slide.
Yeah, send it through, get their feedback.
For our show.
That's fine.
Or give me another five minutes and I'll finish, and I'll say good for it.
Oh, I definitely think we should uh send that on up, get the feedback from it. We can still go over it, have it, and then have it maybe on the agenda one more time.
Have so be like twelve one agenda.
Just to retouch on it real quick. Uh, moving on to utilities and facilities.
Let us go.
So. This was the first time that I had time outside of the meeting to go through it, and I ended up making a lot of. I think kind of minor changes, but a lot of them, um. So, up to you, Joe, how do you wanna go through it? Do, does whoever has questions?
Yeah, let's just uh go through it, I haven't really glanced at it very much, but we have time to enter discussions on stuff.
How, how about if we do it this way, um, let's, let's work from like line one through to the end. At any point where somebody has a question, that person who has that question. When we get to that, you know, after we go down through it, rather than one person going all the way through it, then start with another person going all the way through again.
One section at a time, I agree.
Look, just one line, however, just. So we only go through it once.
Questions on page one? Or two?
Brian's done work on this part, right?
Brian has done most of all of it, and then I just um took his most recent version and just sort of moved stuff around and changed some, some words.
You, 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 it looks like we more or less you. Words sifted.
Yeah.
He's pretty thorough on these things.
Reorganized.
So does everybody sign off on page one?
Yep.
Yep.
We're on page two.
Okay.
Um, the, the other thing, so one, the first comment on page two was move to municipal services, I had, um. Last Thursday or Friday, sat down, um, to do the Health and Human Services chapter. And found it very difficult to use what was there, um, and it, it seemed like it was. Tied to the utilities and facilities so closely, um. That I have kind of a different direction that I'd like to take that chapter with, that we'll talk about next, um, but basically, um. This chapter talks about the municipal. Or not even only municipal, but utilities and facilities specifically, and then the services that the that those organizations provide, like the fire department. Um the s- the more service oriented language would go into municipal services chapter, and this would only deal with the fire department building. So when you see that, that's a kind of a new concept, municipal services.
Everybody good on page two?
Yep. Yep.
On three? Everybody good on three? Does anybody have anything to say?
Yeah. Um well, eighty eighty. Am I on three or four? Page three, um where it says uh eighty six, in high cost of new individual systems. Uh could could we add potential high cost of new individual, because not all new systems are. Are high costs, there are some that are actually fairly reasonable. The the press we can be a very reasonable system, actually.
Do you have any like?
Data?
Num- numbers?
Uh yeah, I I built mine for about seven thousand dollars.
Okay, that includes the plan and or the permit, the design.
The plan, the permit, yeah. Uh twenty sixteen.
Okay, so we prices are pretty much tall since then, but.
Oh, okay, you still talk about fourteen thousand, when when a a general mound system today would be forty. So, so ju- but you're just changing the potential, potential high cost of of new individual systems. Um cuz it depends on, depends on where you want, what you got, and what you're gonna be able to do. And then there's there's there are some some things.
Should we mention any type of uh in wastewater in general, the ability to repair? Versus replace?
Say that one more time.
Should there be like a little bullet point and something in there, eh for something that says you can repair, or you know, that. That's another option, like you have a leach field that's failed, I mean technically you can repair if. By changing out the media inside of it, which usually then turns it, but do we the whole thing, or is it, you were worth?
Do we need to include that in the town plan?
But I'm pretty sure, okay, there I am over engineering it.
The the idea is that that you talk about the systems and you talk about development. Um if somebody's gonna repair something, you they're gonna have to do whatever the law says. Yeah, they're not the town plan. Good point. Thanks for walking me back for that one.
What we're here for, we're all here together.
Nice guy, I saw a whole lot of like, here we go.
H four, I I always liked the graphics. Thousand words, no.
Yep, yes.
Yeah, and that's a pretty interesting one that we could probably spend time talking about, wave a bigger copy at some point.
Uh line one thirty seven on page five, are we just looking for the number of kilowatt solar yields or?
Um I wanted a little bit more just information about it, just to say that this is an electric utility that the town actually has on their property and.
Five hundred kilowatt system.
Five hundred. And and then I wanted to say, the town owns the land, leases to company, just sort of describe what the. The town's business is right up.
We do, and I don't remember, that 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 lease was sold, so I'm not sure who the owner of that is now.
Okay.
Brandon would be answering that.
And maybe that's not so important, but wanted, I wanted just to capture sort of what it is that we have here.
Brandon can answer that stuff.
Okay.
So Ray Ray might be able to, but I think Brandon's problem.
What was your thought on one forty five, with the underground distribution transmission?
I've dealt with this before and going underground more than doubles the cost.
Visualizing the landscape.
It goes twice the diameter, doctor, because it's a heat buildup. Around the lines of overhead, the heat dissipates, but the underground doesn't, you have to go a much heavier cable. Cost of bearing it, it's it's more than double the price. I mean, considering it is fine, but I mean, it's not gonna be done on a big scale.
Yeah, um I think that this chapter is specifically talking about. Town. Well. I don't know, I guess I I didn't know who that line was oriented towards, like, we're not gonna tell Velco and and Greenmount Power where their line, whether they should be above or below. We could potentially say that it would be better for homeowners to do it underground, but I don't think that's really what we're interested in.
Would that sentence then be later turned on? To be the backing behind bylaws, mandating that everybody has to have underground wiring jump in.
But only if. That seems unlikely.
I I I I haven't, I didn't find it to be um more expensive. When I did, again, in twenty sixteen, they did it. Um.
How far we're going underground?
I I wish we pulled it out, or from the pole, it was a hundred and four feet, I think I had to go.
Yeah.
Um.
No, that's a different story, it's it's, I was looking at this as to like. For transmission lines or whatever. Carrying transmissions lines, you don't ever run through town, even and there, when you're going for any distance underground. Then the cost would weigh up.
Okay.
Individual houses, no, that's not that bad, my neighbors have done that too.
Yeah, okay, I see what you're saying.
I think, I. My message is this line, that line is historic. Coming from previous town plans and it's it's just a general statement. That, you know, wouldn't it be nice if we didn't have power lines to look at all over the place, I think that'd be nice, so let's consider it.
Would we add residential use to that sentence?
Yeah, if you just took the word distribution out, or what, distribution of transmission, just. You know, presidential.
Why not? I would, I I don't see any reason, I mean. I don't know. The, I don't see that hurt.
Uh underground distribution and transmission lines uh for residential use should be considered, because there's still distribution.
Even presidential scale.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. For residential use should be considered, you could you can make it back.
Well, I wonder about like. Lines going to, if the town's gonna build a new fire department, something like, a town building is not necessarily residential.
Ah, okay.
But still that sort of scale, I guess.
Um new construction should.
Yeah, I I think striking, I just sort of wanted to to talk about, or specifically, I wanted to see if Brian. If if he wrote that, or if that was something that carried over, or what was.
I think that's a carryover, yeah. I I I. I think that's a carryover, I don't know.
And and to be honest, I think this is, if that was the only thing, it it, let's say it's the only thing in this whole document. I'd still be willing to send it to the select board with that in and figure it out later. If it even came up, you know.
That's fine, if this is being considered, it's not mandated.
Yeah, it's really not considered, yeah. Yeah.
Next page.
Okay, so on the next page, I took the whole section about um wireless communications towers and citing the PUC review. And took that and put it in a different chapter, and so um. We we can talk about it, but my thought was, we would have a chapter. That talks about PUC review, it talks about renewable energy, and it talks about wireless communications. Um initially, I added those two different chapters, but they're not very long, and they're both tied to that initial PUC review section. Um so you can see how that looks when um I'll show it. It it seemed like this sort of just stuck out, it it didn't really flow the rest of the plan. Um and we're doing it for a very specific reason, so it, I don't know, it seemed like it made sense to just put it something.
Okay.
Wow, so actually, first when I saw this, it was all strike down, like, all that work, gone?
Yeah.
No, just move.
Yeah. That totally makes sense.
Uh town buildings are the responsibility of the select board and the town manager, um. To to where does the, there there's a couple that are land trusts. That might not necessarily fall under that. Do we have to call, do we, should we call it out? Like the library? For instance.
As a land trust?
Like the library building is actually a land trust. Yes.
Like they own a easement on it? Or do you mean like it's owned by trustees of the library?
It's owned by the trustees of the family.
Okay.
Um, yeah, see, and and the trustees of the library, they they write their own budget and submit the budget to us for the operation of the building, so. Does that count then, I mean?
Is the library on here as one?
It's a floor.
It it is on.
Town buildings are generally. The responsibility of, how about that? That occurs a lot. I'm in a quick fix.
But that then raises the question to the, you know, to the intellect of, oh, okay, what's not?
Yeah, 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 what it, so what do you mean?
Uh and and in fact, town fire stations. Um both of those are leases. The prop- the right properties are leases.
Right.
Okay.
I don't think a process of trying to buy those or.
Um the eighteen seventy nine schoolhouse in the Wasington Field may also be.
Right.
Uh a part of a a a land tra- a a a trust. Um. And the practice, property library.
Should I delete that first sentence then, and leave everything else? Rather than try and describe the ownership structure of each of them?
I guess it doesn't really matter.
That's that's just like one of those statements that I've been told many times, the town buildings are the responsibility of the town manager.
Yeah.
Okay. To jump back to, I'm sorry.
I I I guess in that case, just leave it the way it is. And what's a town building is, it's understood who's responsible for it, those that are out, I I mean, we, I think they have a certain level of involvement with all of those buildings. Uh that are managed by the select board and and the and the town manager.
I can add, I can add a line that says, um. S- uh some of them are, I I could describe that there's other parties that are involved in in some of them.
Yeah, yeah, I I'm gonna ask Brandon.
Okay.
Uh on Alan, just see what he thinks uh and how he wants to, so we don't step on his toes. Because as town manager, yeah, he does manage. Uh I Mark Memorial Hall.
Right.
Is is under a trust, isn't it?
Yeah. They need to have a board of trustees.
Right. Right, so. But I think the town manager takes responsibility for the building, still.
Right, like the trustees sort of. Sort of stored it and guided, but he's ultimately the one who funds the changes and runs the studies.
I I would just, check with him and see what he says and and whatever you guys come up with, I I'm good with it either way.
You know, maybe actually just taking that sentence, the and under, um what is it here, line two seventy eight, the property deed requirements of this building. Are created by a board of trustees appointed by the select board, the trustees are tasked with identifying maintenance and improvements and needs to keep a public space in good condition. Taking that and kind of bringing it up a little bit into the town, buildings are generally responsible. Uh are the responsibility of select board and town manager and saying. Trustee properties or something like that, and that could apply to any of the properties down below that happened to be ran by trustees. Rather than having to individually speak each one out, because you kind of bring up that question on the property library further down. And it could just be a more blanketed statement. All the way through, kind of help it go through a little bit.
Yeah.
Hopefully I portrayed that the way I thought of it.
Yeah, I think I could add a a sentence that says, there are other stakeholder groups, trusts, et cetera, that um. That uh are involved in the management of these properties.
Yeah, and then, you know, it just eliminates a lot of the question all the way through.
Yeah.
That would be.
Is that typo on two seventy five?
On what one?
Line two seventy five is titled heading Mark Memorial Hall.
Matten.
Yeah.
We got a new building?
Brian.
Good catch. That's how we had the town of Westfield for a long time.
That's why we're being the big bucks.
Okay, can I make a comment on this thing?
Oh, absolutely.
I was just thinking, um. Now I've not, in the most recent select board meeting, Sapa TV came to talk to us. And one of the things they talked about is, well, they had a lot of a lot of stuff, but that. They haven't been keeping up to date with, these cameras are. Things they installed at some point apparently and and don't work and haven't worked for some time. And when that came up, it was like really unclear whose responsibility it was to like. Notice that kind of thing and and keep them updated or like take them down or like deal with them. And I just. It. The secret, I I would find to talk to Brandon about like ways that I could like help liaise between Sapa and and the town and and just as far as like making sure. Everything that happens in this room is transparent and I love, like, it would be cool if there was a line here about like. Just keeping the building and facilities like. Technologically up to date.
All that, like, it's right in my uh wheelhouse of property management maintenance, there should be. Um full maintenance programs. Set up for each of the buildings, I don't know what there is and isn't.
I I I think you're gonna see that coming in the capital plan.
Yeah.
That the town manager's working on, does that cover it, that'll cover it, that's starting with uh like um. Equipment, stuff like that, but it'll eventually come down to buildings, infrastructure, you know, maintenance. And and don't forget, one of the things we we knocked it out of the park recently on is the ARPA funds, we could care the roofs on three buildings. Which is like forty years worth of. Um with bears, the taxpayers didn't have to pay for one agricultural for a long time. That that was a good thing, so but, yeah, Brandon's Brandon's pretty receptive guy.
So, but Steph is pointing, I think it might make sense to spend a little bit more time and then get the details of the ownership or management structure for each of these independently. And say, Martin Memorial Hall um has a board of trustees and the town manager who collaborate on maintenance of the property, the the. Property library has whatever their system is and. It might be worth calling out that structure specifically for each, rather than a blanket stage and saying it's complex.
Yeah, yeah, brief briefly on each one, just enough so everybody, yeah, enough to, yeah, I think you you can handle that. That good, good call.
You'd be surprised how many places I go to that have infrastructure that's left up, they're like, oh, we didn't even realize that was still there.
Yeah, like I didn't notice it for a long time, to know that those are there and I.
See the green light that's on?
Yeah.
We we always thought when the green light was on, we were re-recording. Those things used to follow was like the owl.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is what it would do, like when you started talking, it'd go to you.
Yeah, but like, I don't know, DeForest asked, like, are are you gonna take these down, and he was like, do you want us to, and it was just like clear at that point that there was no plan to revisit, yeah.
Personally, if they were mine and I had a company that installed them and weren't using them. I'd get them back, when, when some of them have been useful, but that's a whole rabbit hole that we're about, I'm stopping myself, guys.
With self-control.
Where are we at, I, what did I miss?
Tell me what I missed, just tell me what we need to run.
Oh, okay. Brief discussion on who was in um. Uncharged of buildings like.
Yeah, yeah, it sounded like you guys nailed it, I think writing that into the town plan is a good idea.
Uh we're at three sixty three.
Thank you.
Right, that's where I.
Well, it's, you're the boss, I'll just, I'll just touch up to you, that's fine, maybe.
Um yeah, the recreation section, my thought was that will probably fit better in the municipal services rather than facilities and utilities chapter.
Right.
Are there enough municipal services to make a full chapter? I think so, once I started thinking about it, I'll pull up sort of my outline, oh, actually, it's the next one we have.
Yeah.
Um I think it would probably be worth it.
Do you remember why we were removing childcare facilities or is that just gonna get moved somewhere else?
Um, I think because. It's not relevant to this chapter.
It seemed a little odd. I mean. Maybe it could, maybe it's like an edu- it's like an education chapter, if we wanna call. Pre. Okay. I mean, I don't know what, you know, children, children learn.
They're willing where they fall, isn't it?
Children learn quickly and and wherever they are, whatever they're doing. So maybe it fits over there.
But what I think of the the permitting process, we went through the old lady this past year, you know, that that's all about establishing a program. Which is part of the education program, right? Childcare, education.
Well, there's educational childcare and then there's babysitting childcare stuff for like when school's not. There's two different things right there and I kind of remember, yeah, and I remember us having discussions on childcare, I don't really wanna see it done. I think.
But it doesn't fit here.
But where it's going.
Education.
But it's not just education.
Whatever.
It's not just for facility either.
Right, so maybe you should go into economics, economic development? Or does that really stretch that one a little bit?
I think that kind of makes sense, childcare facility, if if we're gonna be, if the town is gonna have any role in planning for childcare facilities, I think it's about thinking about. Your future residents, families, and that's related to economic development, living ambitions.
The thing that, I mean, it's kind of, I mean, kind of. We had a bad experience due to, to the, the zoning bylaw as written, which we wanna change. If that had not happened, would we still wanna have this much discussion? About like, are we talking about this because we have a a zoning bylaw issue?
Childcare's. A challenge for people to get, and I'm not kind of like placing it on the, um, the the whole thing that happened with the childcare thing. It's just looking back at, you know.
Totally.
Thank God my kids are old enough, I don't have to worry about it right now.
Legit.
But, um, it's always been a challenge.
Are 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 we talking, I I didn't think we were really talking about the language, I think we, I think we were talking about where were we gonna put it?
Yeah, yeah, I didn't wanna redo anything in the language, I just don't wanna lose it.
Yeah, and he's he's suggesting that probably the best place is economic.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, I just don't wanna lose the, the earmark.
For, well, so one thing that the last town plan did a lot of, which was calling out different services and stuff in the area. And it talked about where are our hospitals and where are our train stations and all that kind of stuff. That wasn't really town guide guiding, you know, language, it was just sort of like capture, it was just providing a lot of information to people about the area. Which I think is okay, um, and if that's the. If that's what the goal is with the childcare facility, like this language saying this is where it's available. I don't think that's so much town planning, um. If if you wanted to keep anything like that, perhaps under what I'm gonna suggest is the HR section. Um, in the municipal services, I wanna talk about HR because, um. One of the things that Suzanne does a lot as sort of our HR person, she's the one, she's like the face of the town, people will come into the town office and ask her questions. About all kinds of things, and she's the one who connects them to, um. Uh, residents in need and, um, meals on wheels and all of those different type of connections. So if we're gonna talk about childcare facilities, we could talk about it under HR and say, these are the services that are available locally. Um, or if we wanted to take more of a planning approach, I think the economic development chapter, we could talk about. Why, how, why childcare facilities is important related to housing and economic development, but that's not this language. I don't think, that we we could have more theoretical discussion on it in the economic development. But if it's this language you wanna preserve, then that's probably just like.
Okay, we just checked off economic development, this is not over there.
Right.
Yeah.
And that is just a whole nother subject to to bring up, and I don't think it's. The major one.
I just remember us having a pretty good discussion on it and getting it kind of. You know, narrowed down to this on here, I just hate to lose that work that was done on it. For something that is important to a lot of families here in town, whether this is where it belongs or it belongs in another chapter. Or if it should just sit here for now, so it's not lost.
Well, what do you think about HR? If we used all of this language, we could say that these are sort of resources and, uh, things available to residents.
Think if you put in HR under municipal services, that sounds like it's something that's kind of just included for the town municipal works. Versus the entire people of the town, okay?
Well, other than the intro to that, that section would probably have to be clear, but. The, it's a service to our residents that we have. Um, our HR department is the thing that sort of connects people to all places.
Then that kind of makes it as the town's responsibility to. Wouldn't it at that point to like, okay, now we're gonna be the ones saying, here's the childcare, you go here, 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 versus an informational thing?
Well, that's what this is, that's, this basically just says this is here, here and here are where you can go to look at childcare information. So I don't think we need to do that, but if you wanted to keep that language, that's sort of the role that it's playing, it's not really planning, it's more, this is where information's available.
Anybody else wanna weigh in on this one or? Our opinions?
You know, we can't create the terrorists, we just have regulations of. There's, seems like there's a few different. Childcare related discussions or like points that that fit into different chapters as well. I. It it feels to me like the town plan should be. Should be guiding us. Should be get, should be showing, uh, what we're looking for, but. Like, if I was, the the town plan is the last place I would think to look if I needed a childcare facility, like I'd be on on my phone Googling that. And it, the 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 Venn diagram of people who have young ki- babies and people who have cell phones is just like. We're hitting that really good, you know? Yeah, you know, or like, know how the Google machine works, that's, I don't know, it just.
It also seems like one of those relics that's sort of, it's just something for us to maintain, it says there's five registered. Facilities, that's probably gonna change, and brightfutures.com might not be the website for very long and, um.
Yeah, it, I, that's, I just, yeah, yep, yep, yep. I think that that, that as a goal of of like. You know, I think that the childcare thing maybe fits in because of the the known zoning bylaw problem we have, that seems really relevant. It is, it seems like a step away from the other stuff. Because it's not town sponsored, it's not town owned, it's not town anything, you know, like, oh, the other sort.
Well, going by that logic, then we should take out the stuff about the private campgrounds, the vast stuff, the Crown Point Military Road.
Those are like land area. Things, I don't know, it feels different that this is like. I don't know, maybe it's not, maybe you're right. It just.
It doesn't belong somewhere else, maybe, I I just don't wanna see.
What is your, what's your goal of including some kind of language about the childcare facilities in the town plan?
It would, it's always nice to know what type of stuff is in the town when you're looking to move into an area, who knows, there could be a grant.
So it's for informational purposes, so residents read through it, they can know what's available.
That, and they never know if there's grant possibilities for it too. You know, when they reference that, that's one thing that's always in my head, and Little Susie's Peanuts is a pretty big employer here in town. Right, you know, it falls into educational kind of too, it falls into housing a little bit, touches on a lot of things, kind of like with.
It seems like there's a little bit of ha- a little bit of education, a little bit of economic development, that that that. You know, maybe, but wow, even then, I, you know, I don't know, it's just, I like kids. I don't want to, you know, it's nice, it's nice, this paragraph sounds nice and it's, and kids are nice, but I'm not sure that's a good reason to have it.
Is it detrimental if we leave it?
I don't think it makes sense here anyway.
Well, no one's gonna go to the town plan looking for daycare facility.
I don't know, how about I throw it into the human resources section, and when we get to that, you can see if that makes sense, and then we can move it around further or expand on it.
Yeah, and the, uh, yeah, definitely.
But if the goal, if the goal is to make people aware of services that are available, I think that that's probably the section that's gonna handle that, cause I wanna talk about. Some of those other services that are available. Aging in place and, you know, things like that.
Yeah, it's, I don't want that to be thought of if it was like all of a sudden became a municipal, like that, that's the only thing.
Yeah, no, we'll, we'll.
As long as we have that type of disclaimer.
Um, okay, so beyond that is a very long list of. Goals, recommendations, policies for a variety of subjects. Brian basically just wanted to lay out everything that he had and we could kind of strip it back and reorganize and and things like that. Um, but there's a ton there and I haven't gone through it.
To kind of touch on the childcare thing again though, um, we also talk about schools and other things like that, just as a. Facility where we're touching on a lot of different things, although we're not mentioned gas stations, so. It's a facility, infrastructure.
Oh.
That, my brain works in weird ways.
Yeah, mine doesn't work at all.
Anyways, I'll digress from that for now, so we can keep on moving forward. So utilities and facilities, definitely goes through a lot here.
It might be worth waiting for Brian to go through these a little bit further, or or take some time to go through them ourselves. I at least, speaking for myself, I haven't gone through them.
These are, this was the old yellow section that he had to go through all of this stuff still, right, beforehand?
Um, I think I talked to him on Friday and he said that he was putting all this together, or I just put it all together.
Okay. Six forty three, support the availability and expansion of licensed childcare facilities within the town to meet the needs of local families, promote economic stability.
Bingo.
See, that sounds more like economic development.
Wow, there's a lot here.
There's a ton.
Yeah.
It's more than a ton.
It it might be good to let him sort of. Tell us what what his thoughts was.
No, there's a bunch.
A bunch?
No, I mean, there's a bunch of childcare stuff, six forty three, six forty five, six forty seven, six forty nine. Six fifty one, six fifty three. Anyway, oh, it's the whole section, he looked six forty, childcare facilities goals.
Well, if you're referencing goals for childcare facilities, then we should probably have that listed.
Well, Brian, line five sixty five says, let me know if you'd like to pair some of these goals with implementation strategy, these are visual cited guidelines, so. Cause it does look like an awful long list.
It's a wicked long list.
That is a funny, uh, yeah, five sixty five, that seems like it should be a, uh, on that, not a, well.
I like it's a fun goal.
Uh, so some of these need to get, I didn't have any negative feeling particularly, but 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 they're probably too many for here, they should get spread into other chapters as appropriate.
Well, ultimately, we need to make this very lengthy section practical and useful. But so it's, if it's all of this, then it's not, it's, you can't even digest it and make it useful.
Practical and useful, geez, layers in the bag.
Yes.
We were kind of restating the obvious on a lot of this stuff and just. What's the consensus? Should should we start with the first one and start talking about them, or are we gonna do it as a plan?
Kind of like to have Brian here for this one, but. Sure, maybe we go through it on our own for the next meeting, have our own two cents with it, and then when he comes back, we already have our notes and. Can do some big work on it, cause this, this is a huge section right here.
Wait, you don't need to, not already read this and make notes on this?
The acid here, the ink right there.
Yeah, yeah, I see it, I don't see it.
Like the old leaded paper.
Yeah, you're lots, you're sort of kind of, wait, I was gonna say, you need to ask some acid to drip on that, maybe it come out or whatever, no, anyway.
Well, considering we still have Health and Human Services, Hank's chapter to jump into, um.
Just cause it starts with an H?
Yeah.
Oh, hmm.
Um, do we wanna, the rest of the board, wanna just kind of leave this section here and we go through it and attack it while Brian's here, cause. I think that probably be the best use of our time on that, so.
Right. I mean, it just reads like what we've been trying to eliminate, all the other sections, it's just, this, this is a whole town plan and stuff.
Yeah, I feel like I need to, I can't do anything productive until I sit down with it for.
Yeah, same.
At least a couple hours.
I mean, a lot of this just, like you said, restating the obvious, so you know, maintain town buildings, well, oh shit, you know.
You're gonna have to read the chapter and then go through that list and say, scratch, 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 okay, this, you know, or 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 or. Come up with, in your head, come up with a list of goals that you see when you read the chapter. And then go look for them, see if they're there, and then make everything else disappear. I don't know, Brian, I think, I think Brian should be involved, I I think this is an example of Brian doing what he says often. Put it all out there, and and, you know, tell me what parts you want. You know, there might be five things here to deal with one thing, and we only need one of them.
Yeah.
And and by going through it that way, you may find that half of the baby goes away, and then we gotta figure out how to get rid of the other twenty five percent. Anyway.
Well, in the whole discussion about goals, recommendations and policies, I wanted to come back to after we've kind of gone through those. The, and we'll talk about that soon, how we're sort of reorganizing that.
But keeping in mind that one of the plans, at least, or selectively just indicated that, uh. They'd like to have at the end of this whole thing, who's responsible for each of these goals.
Right.
And that's a hell of a long list.
We're gonna get beat up.
Moving on to number ten, but I see a little. Um, hiccup here, we have town plan, re-adoption, health and human services, and then we have municipal services.
Right.
That we just changed the name of it, basically?
Yes, so, um, okay, quick question.
The towers, original lines map, right at the end of the previous section that we're not quite done with, it turns out, where is that? We're gonna need those and number them or something at some point?
Um, I I moved the the graphic, the subject graphic up further, so we could probably just delete that second one. And then the map, um. Yeah, maybe there'll be a copy in the text, but I think it's one of those maps that'll go, um.
In Vennix, but have, but have names and numbers and letters and stuff to describe to, so we can talk about each of them.
Oh, you mean the ridge lines themselves need to be identified, yeah, that that will be done.
Great, yeah, will be done, will be done.
Under our desert, isn't it?
That's right. Now that's getting me excited, I'm sorry.
Question here though, when we go through and name and number those, are we just naming and numbering them for our points of discussion here, so we know what they are? Or are they actually gonna end up with these names? And do we have the authority to name these things, kind of like now the waterway discussion and all that?
I think they already have these.
I hopefully a bunch of.
Most of them do, but not all.
So, back to my.
I think we should give Ryan the authority to name the rest of them as he sees fit.
What about unforeseen consequences?
He might not want that.
Worry about it later. Or numbers, numbers, letters, whatever's fine. Always, we could have a long, like a six-digit code for each one.
Marshall sixteen, twenty two, forty three.
Yeah, yeah, as long, we just might need to talk about them and about some thing.
I agree, that, you know, knowing which one we're talking about, rather than the third dot, the left.
Yeah, yeah. Just in case.
So we have municipal services now?
Yes. Okay, so I had written this out, um, in preparation for the meeting that I wasn't meaning to be here for, so I kind of explained what my thinking was. Um, if you wanted to read through that, but, um, basically, when I started. Trying to edit the Health and Human Services and integrate the stuff that we wanted to bring over from the utilities and facilities. Such as the fire department, how that Spanish and stuff like that, um, I didn't think that the. The existing framework really allowed for it, so. Um, what I thought would be useful was a section on the services that the municipality provides. Um, just in general and how how are we planning for for that? Ultimately, a lot of the, um, like subdivisions and conditional uses, they tend to need a signature from all the department heads. To say that this development won't, um. Overburden the municipal services, and so this is one of the places we can talk about what those municipal services. Overburden the municipal services, and so this is one of the places we can talk about what those municipal services are and um. And what their sort of trajectory is. Um, we don't need to have all of these, this is just sort of my initial brain dump of. Facility uh services that we provide, so we have the utilities, that is the water lines and the well. For the Scottney Water District System, um but then if we wanted to have a more of a discussion about the. Water District in general and the management of that, like, is there a discussion about expanding the? The system, is there a discussion about who's managing the system, um and? And what that looks like, um, so. Recreation, I thought fit in this section, um. Joe, to your point about human resources being kind of an internal term. The title of the chapter before was human services, I could change that to human services.
Yeah, I just kinda got hung up on that a little bit.
It it might be better than the municipal services, because as you said before. Not all the things you're gonna put in there are actually municipal service.
Right.
So that might work better.
It is a good catch-all for a lot of places.
My childcare stuff.
And now with that context, it makes a lot more sense to me on that with that this over into here. But we have all those goals.
Why are we talking about ways of addressing existing health problems? Two point three. Age seventy-one, seventy-four.
Um, well, I'm not necessarily proposing any of this text. This is just what the chapter was, um, and I I took a pass at it. Maybe a year ago, that's when I made these initial edits, but I just left uh all of the existing text in there.
Ways of addressing existing health problems, go see a doctor.
So yeah, and so this is where I was like, I don't think we need to list all of the different like doctor off doctors offices and and things like that, that's not really. That helpful.
So to what Hank just brought up though, we don't need this. Where this isn't a required for readoption. It's definitely something worth having discussion for and planning for. But do we need to go down the road of this one at all right now to be able to go forward with the town plan? Would our time be more useful of just. Striking this all together and then coming back with a new clean municipal or.
The problem with that is your striking language is being removed from other areas that.
We would have to just likely the recreation section and utilities and facilities, just.
It it seems like there's a lot here that maybe we don't move.
Well, it's, I mean, we're throwing out all the old language and basically starting over completely new with a. Uh, you're, we're not planning to keep any of the language from this, from the human resources chapter, the human health and human services chapter, correct?
Um, I don't know if there's anything worth hanging on to, but I hadn't evaluated it that way, no, I I think it's basically, yeah.
You're you're basically starting from the beginning, maybe some of some of that stuff will get in, but probably, but it's.
I don't think there's anything real groundbreaking and important in this, but I shouldn't say that, cause there might be some, cause I haven't looked at it that closely.
But it'll be some small percentage going in, not a wholesale, this is good, start with this and then add to it, it's this is a.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
The final catch for anything that didn't have home.
I think Ryan should totally work on this. Sounds good.
I I I I mean, I I'm okay with it up to. Two point two, once you get to two point two and you start talking about like relevant trends.
Yeah.
And existing health problems.
But I'm 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 looking at two point one and I just. I don't know that I'm gonna go to the town plan to figure out what hospitals are in the area, it just seems, I mean.
Well, that's true.
You know, it should just.
Well, it seemed to me like a dog to go and look up all these different businesses and do they still have the same name and are they still having and all that. Yeah, I don't think we need to have any of that.
Good. I see where you're going.
You know, obesity awareness, I mean, for obese, I'm pretty sure of your worry. I guess some of it is that is that I, some some of how I. Feel about the town plan is that. Or since, I mean, this is this is just one of the. One area where we we found this situation in many areas where. We're trying to just have a more focused document, it's not that. This stuff's bad, you know, Sevca is an important thing, Senior Solutions, you know, Springfield Adult Day Services, there's all this really great organizations. I'm not sure, maybe they do need mention in our town plan, I don't know the function of of their mention, right?
Maybe it needs to be in a different book.
Come tell us about why, you know, I'm not sure, you know, maybe somebody's gonna be like, whoa, we're not in there anymore. Let's, we need to be in there for some reason, right, like, but it seems.
The town plan is a guiding duck going to help us form bylaws, right?
And just make general decisions about the town.
Right. These.
I mean, according to our demographics, aging in place is a big deal, right, so like, that section might not be a good idea.
Right, and I don't think that it's organized and formatted in a useful way to talk about those things. I do kind of wanna bring it up under the, we'll call it the human services chapter, and we'll just make a very brief mention that the. There's a food shelf, there's aging in place, there's meals on wheels, there's all the different, we don't need to list them all, but the point is to say that the town provides these services. Of connecting people in need to the services that are available.
I think that's a really good thing to have in the town plan is like. We're worth asking about stuff, like we we, you know, people that work for the town know stuff, ask ask about stuff, we might be able to connect, right? Like, that's, that is really important.
Where it becomes more relevant is when the select board is talking about uh like personnel and what types of positions we wanna have available, you know, for people. Um, how important is it to have a a front desk person, you know, those kinds of things? Um, I think it's important to say that these are services that residents get all the time. I I sit next to Suzanne and I see people come in and they talk to her about it, she's like, she's always telling people who to talk to and where to go and all that kind of stuff.
And that's where it would be good for her if she had like a different document, like a pamphlet, it's a short book, that's what I was talking about, where that she can go to say, hey. Here you go.
Cause transition is, I mean, hopefully Suzanne's here forever, but also people do shit, you know, stuff changes and that. Institutional knowledge needs to be maintained.
It's an important role, and if we're planning about how the town, um, what services the town can provide. That's one that might not be readily apparent when you're thinking about what the town does for people, but that's like one of the most. On the ground, like rubber meets the road, connections and services we provide.
It's almost like how some larger towns have a information booth where you can come in and like, here's everything.
Right, so so you you've got an idea where you're going with this?
Yeah, yeah, I don't think it's gonna be all that comprehensive of listing the different resources as much as saying that the town provides these services of connecting to the. Um, just basically to make the statement that it is a service we provide and. Um, I don't know if there's if there's anything to, including the town clerk and the listers at all, um. It is basically, people are thinking about their tax money and part of that is going towards uh. Municipal services such as record keeping, that's one of the major things that the town as a government. Is a shared service that everyone says we want to all pay into the system to have the records maintained or whatever. Um, so that's sort of why I just put it on that list, I don't know if there's actually gonna be anything to write about.
I I think those things all show up in like the town report and the um budget.
I don't know if it's like, but it might be useful for like Floanne to say, we need um more uh vault space, you know. Those are sort of the things, planning wise, in the future, down the road, people are talking about, do we fund this or do we not? If it's in the town plan, then um then it's something that the town has sort of said. This is something on our objectives list, um.
I don't know from a business perspective that that's necessary in the town plan, for me. Because if we need vault space, we need vault space.
But we should be planning for when are we going to need it?
Well, here's the other thing, though, grants, grants look at the town plans.
Well, even 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 more away from that is the the digitalization of all the records, which means they're in this. Not in in a big vault in the corner somewhere.
Right, so another thing that could be mentioned about planning for the future, the direction that the office needs to go and um.
I don't, I, okay, I I'm I'm following you and I'm not saying it's bad, but I'm just wondering at what point are we actually kind of using the town plan to start to. Micromanage everything. Well, is 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 that necessary?
So it depends whether whether we write it or we ask. You know, I mean, some of it's, some of it's.
Remember, we're talking about a non-required element here.
Yeah, I I I'm I'm thinking, I'm just coming at it from, what are the services that everyone is pooling their tax money to pay for? And is it recognized and are we planning for their future? Cause I think there's uh there's a lot of people who are dissatisfied with the way that the town operates and. Um, it would be good to sort of be cognizant of our future and the things that, if there are problems, what are they and how can we address them?
Okay, um, but I but I don't know if I want the town plan to turn into a document that that strikes all of this. Divisive kind of, I want this, I want that, I don't want this, I don't want that type. The town plan is kind of a culmination of ideas, what the town is, what what and where it's going. And and how it's gonna get there.
It should stick to development.
Um, are there one or two specific areas that people keep sort of saying the town's doing a lousy job at this?
Um, well, I've heard record keeping come up a lot, a lot, basically, oh, the town doesn't have this, I submitted it to them five years ago, they never keep track of me. That, I mean, that's not a real concrete thing to to write about, but um, to to recognize that. Some of the the services that the town provides should be planned for.
I I also kind of like the. The story of of explaining, I think I think people are not always. Don't always. Understand. What town government's for does, I think Ryan's description kind of of what this chapter might be. Is painting that picture a little bit, then again, I'm not sure anybody reads. So maybe it's irrelevant because, you know.
Hmm, it's useful, I think, at least to those people involved, the town manager and the select board, just. Recognize how they're all interconnected, I deal with Floanne and I deal with Barb Thomas on a daily basis. Cause they all have a role in permitting and um and, yeah, taxes. Um.
So you feel like this whole chapter is something that's mission critical to.
Nope.
Local plan?
Not necessarily. But if we wanna plan for our services more than just the buildings and the infrastructure, um. That's sort of where I was thinking that this chapter would do that.
I'm would love to see the full thought that you have on this all put down in front of us. At the same point, do we need to work on that? In something where we're crunched on everything else?
It could absolutely be an objective in this town plan to develop a a section, um. You know, on the stuff, or or it doesn't make sense to be in the town plan and maybe this is for a master plan or whatever. The thing that kills me is if there's too many, if there's plans about plans, it's just like. That that bothers me.
Yeah, by the time you get it done, is it is it worth having, is it worth? You putting some more effort into this, so we can understand the picture a little bit or?
Yeah, well, how about I just, I won't prioritize it and what I'll put together will be sort of a a minimally fleshed out, sort of see how it's organizing. And why it's there.
To talk to Brandon about this idea. Uh, be- because he's, um. From from a master plan, town plan perspective, those are things he's worked on.
Hmm.
Um, extensively, and he might have some some good guidance for us on where to go with this. Um. And I'm saying that, Ryan, for this reason. You got a lot on your plate already, you don't need something on your plate to do that we're gonna look at and say, now we don't wanna do this, you spent five, six hours on. Uh, I I don't think that's fair to Ryan, uh, uh, okay, and it's for a good use of his time.
One more thing that I'll just say about it, um, I think of like the listers and what is the long-term plan for assessments and things like that? Everyone's all worked up and surprised about a nu- a new reappraisal. Partly because it's been put off for so long and now everything's so outdated, it's gonna be dramatic changes and like. Maybe we should be planning to have reappraisals on a real regular basis. Um, or or something like that, I don't know what the what the right way to do it is, but um. Like, people shouldn't be surprised that they're taxed on their property value.
Right, the the statutory requirement is based off of the CLA and the number that that reaches. You're not statutorily required until it drops below eighty percent, um, then you're required to do. Which is what we actually focused on, um, but it it through all of those conversations, what was being left out. Was the loss of tax revenue based on calculations given to the personal property tax. For very, very large corporations uh with millions and millions of dollars of infrastructure. And instead of being taxed at eighty percent or at a hundred percent, uh, once it drops below a hundred percent. That's the percentage they pay on on their personal property tax, so instead of a hundred percent, and and we're now down. Uh, in in the sixties, the upper sixties. Instead of being up in the eighties, nineties or hundredths, it's a lot of money and and that. That's money that goes against the grand list. And the tax bill comes out to support the town, and if they don't pay that tax, guess who does? So we we need to keep a much closer eye, I I think that's the select board's job. That's their responsibility to keep an eye on that and and the listers, um, those are jobs that are there. That's where I I say that that kind of thing starts to, to me, starts to become micromanagement, those people don't even know how to do their job and they don't need somebody to tell them. And poke them all the time and, you know, you get it into this, or you didn't do that, and you need to do this. Uh, you know, Slack board needs to know that's that that they need to keep an eye on that, and that CLA starts dropping, and 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 it's always been a topic of discussion. We just didn't look at it correctly, and I was part of that, I take responsibility for that, um, and and so.
I mean, this sort of, like, the town plan is also a good place for important institutional knowledge, like. How is the Proctor Library owned? I don't know who owns that, like, maybe I should get in town plan, maybe, you know, who knows who's gonna be on the slideboard in fifteen years, maybe they should know that. That, you know, this is, you know, uh, to Ryan's point about about planning. You know.
To to that point, what you just, the way you just made it. That part, that. That building has has to be used as a library, if it stops being used as a library, that piece of property goes back to the family. It's not owned by the town. And and and, you know, and that's just, that's just the nature of the trust, that's what it is, it's there for the town to use as long as they want, but if they ever stop. Then the building converts back to the family ownership. So that is important when it comes down to who's slapboard to read ten or fifteen years from now, that's important stuff.
I know when I first moved to your town, I'm probably one of those oddballs that actually enjoyed reading the town plan and learning the history and. The, you know, the infrastructure and just what is where and where it goes, and I also like really dry reading materials, but um. You know. The, looking at the information that was in the plan, showing the whole history and the broader scope of things. Was really eye-opening and it was good. But also now on the planning aspect of it, where we're using it as our guideline. Well, yeah, that was very wordy and it had way more in there than was necessary. And, you know, not to be making a a document or another plan or something like that, is it almost worth still keeping a lot of that historical knowledge? In something that goes out, but not. In something that goes out, but not in the town plan where we're using it to generate our bylaws and policies and things like that. But not lose that information, that content.
I don't think you're losing that information, there are there are people in this town that they have a historical society that means maintains a lot of records. Patty Harrison DeForest goes a a huge amount of history about this town.
Well, where I was going with that though is when you move to town to get property, you get a copy of the town plan, you get all this stuff, it came to us.
I I understand, I I understand what you said. And I think what it was used for was to kind of lay out, okay, this is this is where we come from, this is where we are, where are we going? You know, and how are we gonna get there? I I think that's kind of what that map was, I'm not sure that that changes that much, I mean.
No, it still has a lot of the contacts and the other stuff in there, um. It was just the, you know, hey, you know, there's all this good information, I'd hate to see the information lost. Uh but I also don't wanna make a huge ungodly document that's got so much clutter in there, we can't.
Also, I don't think it's gonna be lost, one because they're all you know, they were the town plan for a period, they're all, you know, saved hard copies in the in the in the vault and they're available online. But um one of the things that the the conservation, the conversation group who has been talking about is updating the uh a new new resident packet, we have one that sort of talks about where do you throw your trash and you know, welcome to town here are things you should know. Um and I think it's real outdated, but um that might be one of those things where and new people to town come into the town hall and they get that information, um. They get a copy of the town plan or find out where to find the town plan too, but that type of context and history and stuff like that. Um that might be the way to give it to those people.
So would the stuff in this health and human service, sorry municipal services chapter belong more in that document?
It I I guess it could, but I don't wanna so much tell people about what the services are as much as plan for the town's ability to provide them.
Well, and this was how the plan was forged, planned for the future.
Right.
Yeah, what what Ryan's talking about this chapter sounds the like the more we talk about it, the better I feel about it. Uh actually, it's it's um I mean, it's just another side to planning and that this isn't just for us. You you know, other departments are using this document as they see fit, we should try and make it. I mean, it should be when we write a chapter, we're talking, you know, we talked to Ray about transportation. That's the same should be, you know, if if we go ahead with these sections or you know, however this chapter may or may not come out, obviously talking with the people who are doing the work is you know, is paramount.
And there's different approaches to those services, so like in Rockingham, they have three uh hired employee listers who are always kind of updating things, they're very involved, their listeners department, I have no idea how it really works. But they're they're every day, three of them and they're very busy. Um we have one volunteer who works just a few hours a day. And so there are two different approaches and I I'm not saying that one's better than the other, but what it would be good for the town to recognize what lane we're in and is that the lane we want to stick in or are we understaffed and we need to think about making money available to hire more listers or go to a hired assessor or you know, just sort of thinking about what how will that, I don't wanna micromanage and get into the detailed specifics, but like what trajectory, you know, are we on? That that I guess that was my intention. Um do you wanna move on? Cause I have some other things I wanna show you under other business and stuff.
Yeah, I'm good, anybody else wanna talk about this? All right, moving on to uh future agenda items.
There'll be whatever whatever's ready for you guys first.
We pretty much got a full document on that, any other business that can legally be discussed?
Okay, so I wanna show share my screen. Good. Um. So let's start with this outline. I wanted to capture all the chapters and sections so I could just sort of visualize how it flows and I have suggested changing the order of chapters, um. And I took the statutory obligation and put it under each section so that we make sure that we're getting all those things. Um. And so the major difference that I wanna show you on this one. That's more helpful. Um is education and renewable energy standards, so I was saying we should add uh a paragraph at the end or a chapter at the end about um P U D review, P U C review rather. Um and I had suggested two chapters, one for renewable energy standards and one for wireless communications. But they're really not all that long, um and they both fit under the P U C review, so I'm thinking we'll probably combine those two. Um and then I did feel the need to go back to the natural scenic historic resources section to try and make that a little bit smaller since it was four times as long as any of the other chapters and so much of it was listing specific streams and pond and things like that, so I took a lot of that and put it in a in another chapter, that's an inventory of those resources and then the the natural scenic historic resources chapter is more specific about planning for those, um. I'll I'll show you that, so um natural scenic historic resources. This was my test, basically. Um. And so now I'm not sure how the best way to show it to you is, but um now the habitat which had maybe side by side with this one. Okay, so we had a long section about conservation design and how the the state makes their maps. Um I took that out of the the main chapter. Um ponds, it lists the different ponds in town, different streams. Um you know, all those things. I took all of that out and in the habitat section, it just talks about, this is all the same language that was in there. Um but it simplifies it to a just sort of talk about um when we're regulating development um with relation to habitat. This is just sort of the nuts and bolts of that. Um.
I can read that from here to plenty of letters, you know that, right? Just wanted to know that. I just realized a double I name.
Can you read it to me?
I could, but you keep scrolling.
So the other thing that I wanna ask you for uh your advice on is whether you like in this chapter, I um I
Ooh.
I included goals in line rather than have goals and all that stuff at the end. I thought it made sense in this chapter because they're all sort of, there's a goal related to each section. Like our goal related to habitat, maintain ecological function.
To keep it oriented.
Yeah, I like that.
I think it it makes sense in this section, it wasn't as easy when I went to do it in others, so maybe it's a mix. Um but the working landscape, it it's a real brief statement about it, um. And then.
The chapters are different and they work differently and I think you have to kind of, I think that works.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Um and so for soils, this talks about steep slopes and and primax soils, those are the two conservation-related aspects of soil. This is all under the land resources subchapter. Um a goal for that. Protection of outstanding water, um so we have surface waters. Groundwater, aquifers, wetlands. Scenic resources. And I made, the goal is kind of like an obvious statement, um but then we'll nest whatever objectives underneath it. Uh historic.
The only issue with having them in nested in is if we're looking, if we wanna see them. You know, it my it I I my brain uh went straight to wondering if we should have a separate document of all the goals and objectives or like all the action.
Mm-hmm, I think so. That's that was that was sort of my 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 vision, if we integrated them, I think it makes more sense when you're reading through the chapter. But from a practical standpoint, I mean, the goals and objectives are basically the the meat of the plan.
Right.
Um and yeah, we should just have those separated um as like a to-do list basically. Or like a like.
An 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 appendix that wants you like like if you're gonna continue to have it like this, but you've got them also included in an appendix document, then just list them.
Right.
When I get there and I see it, it tells me where I can find it in the in the in the.
Yeah, that's handy, a matrix too, that also says who's responsible for each of these. Like.
Yeah, that and that's what I thought would go in that second piece, rather than put it all in here.
Yes.
Well, yeah, that's second piece we'll think about and it might be organized differently, not so much by chapter as much, maybe it's more by priority or something like that.
Oh, I kind of like the the, I kind of was thinking like a like an outline.
That followed this.
An outline that follows that, so it you kind of can go back.
That might make more sense.
Yes.
So let me show you, um. Yeah.
Though there is like, I'm not sure how to prioritize stuff, I'm not sure that.
I think we can prioritize it within the s- within the categories.
Well, and also probably within discussion here, like some of it'll be like I need to talk about small lots.
Yeah, I say.
Right, yeah, I mean, some of it'll be.
Back.
Yeah.
I want seventy.
You know.
Just wanna grab a guy.
Um or or what people bring to us, right, I mean, either way, but.
So. So this is how I've tried to start organizing the goals and objectives. Um this is the, I just said it's the primary, this is basically how the town plan opens, so I just took that for now. Um and then I took all of the goals, I was gonna take all the objectives too, but then I mean, there are pages and pages of objectives that we're gonna need to simplify. Um but I took all the goals for each chapter and went through and I made comments about just my thoughts or or I changed certain things um to get me and I moved certain ones, like we had a goal um to protect, conserve and expand existing agricultural businesses, that was in the land use chapter. It fits more with the economic development chapter anyway, so we moved some of those things. And then I took that and just said, if everyone was good with with those things, then I can start um trying to organize the goals and make them a little bit more clear, so um here I added a goal under each uh sort of main section of the outline, um thinking that those things are kind of important enough to have a section about them, we should say what the reason is and what what is the goal for those things. Um. So.
What's the difference between a goal and an objective again, just?
The goal is kind of like the broad um idea of what you want to end up with and the objectives are more the to-do list action items. And I I was thinking about changing that language to say specifically like to do or action item, um.
Goals and actions.
Yeah. Cause I want that to be obvious that an objective is not the same thing as a goal and it's an action or like something that we want to accomplish achievable action.
Implementation?
Yeah.
Why, then you're really gonna put us on the.
Big words. I wanna spend my old nickel.
We're gonna have to do stuff if we keep on this trajectory.
Yeah.
Good. Well.
Well, we don't have to take those things, we can assign it to the select board.
I love it, now we're talking.
Say what?
Nuts.
Terrible that you're here at both, you know, it's we're gonna just push things right over to you guys right now.
All right, so that's how I'm going through and trying to organize goals and objectives. Um is there's anything else I wanted to show you? Uh.
This is really good, right?
I don't think that.
A lot of good work is in there.
So I think we've gotten through a lot of the chapters and I'm starting to sort of piece it together and get sort of a zoomed out look at things, which
It's pretty amazing.
It's pretty challenging, I didn't, when I was thinking, I'll just take all the goals and I'll put them on a piece of paper. I didn't, it was like eight pages long and it was like, maybe I'll print them off and cut them out and put them on the ground, but that's not gonna work, so.
Then you're gonna need some bigger paper.
Even add utilities and facilities yet.
Oh, yeah, I know, I skipped that whole thing, yeah.
Let's finish this up.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm on script, right? And we go over there. You know, in general, you come out with a a like an idea with possibly your different concepts, but you know where you're going with all of them, so that's good.
Yeah, so I think we can kind of, we we got it, we'll get all the information that we want and then we can kind of reduce it, clean it up, make it flow, make it hopefully a useful.
I I thought we were getting there.
Feel like this is reduced.
Yeah, I feel like we did, didn't we do that, right?
Well, we're gonna reduce, reformat, reduce again, reformat.
Reduce or reduce, reuse, recycle here. Ryan, the work that you've put in on this is paramount, but like you have done excellent job of that, I can't stress that enough.
Um. Wish I had more time to do it, it seems like every week, it's like Tuesday, Wednesday, I tend to focus, I do Monday and Thursday are my planning days. And the zoning stuff just seems to, it's just like.
We we switch you up to sixty hours a week.
Yeah, exactly.
So like a good idea for me.
Yeah, I don't think you like to, it's a good idea to him. This thing called a personal life.
Uh well, as we go through, we get this whole town plan done, that then allows us to get the zoning part of it, which is part two.
Are you guys at any point planning to have this town plan approved by the state?
I guess state, state doesn't approve it.
So I've I've been looking into this, there's a process by which town is not required, it's optional. But any town in Vermont can submit their town plan to a regional commission and have it approved. Which makes that town eligible for certain grants.
I think we do do that.
The regional commission will review and and sign off, basically.
That part we do do, we do do, I said do do.
That's definitely.
Doesn't this kind of go back to the enhanced town plan or something that we spoke of?
Well, that's the energy plan.
Oh, energy, yes, okay.
Yeah, but we but I think what what you're getting at is um we need to have an approved planning process. Um in order to be eligible for certain things like the state designation programs and things like that. Which is to say that our town plan needs to say that it aligns with the regional plan, which needs to say that it aligns with the state's general plan.
And it meets all the elements statutorily.
Yeah.
There's like a list of elements that it needs to have, then if you get it approved, you can apply for the municipal planning grants.
Right, yes, yeah, yeah, we'll, yeah, we we do that. Yeah, we've been doing that for years. I've only been here about sixteen years doing this. But yeah, that that's.
That was gross.
So which which regional commission is our our commission?
Mark, the mayor's.
Not the Scotty Regional Commission. You know, on most Scotty region. It needs to be southern.
And if you wanna go back on some history, what was it before this?
Southern Windsor County Regional Planning Commission.
Thank you, you got funny names.
Yeah.
My opinion.
A lot of others.
Yeah, Southern Windsor County.
So this is the existing version of the town plan with approved and then you'll have to reapprove the new one?
The the current town plan does not, it has expired, so currently we have no town plan.
It was approved, but then it.
It was two thousand seven or seven, no, seventeen.
Yes.
And 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 it was, I think that was on uh a seven year twenty-four ran out, twenty-five somewhere near, I don't, I forget.
It ran out May first twenty twenty-five, I think it's an eight-year plan. I think it maybe it started at seven and then the stats are changing.
Started, well, I started when it was five.
The the.
Five access, you know, like.
Well, it's higher than this one, I'll be ready for the next one. We made it.
Are we ready for that next agenda item?
No, it's not yet, we're still on all the business, we got like, oh, it's nine o'clock.
Most do it.
So who?
Let's up, right, it's costly.
I'm I'm good.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
I am, I am going to Japan at the end of December, I'm gonna miss two meetings, I think, in just in January.
Zoom.
New meetings is the the two in January?
I think that I was trying to be more, I think I'm gonna miss um I'm leaving on the twenty-seventh. So the twenty-ninth, we don't actually have a meeting yet. But the fifth, I will be gone and oh, no, maybe, yeah, so just the fifth, so we could, if there's, if we, if you did meet on the twenty-ninth, I would be not here and and I won't be here on the fifth.
So just one?
So just one and so far, yeah, I mean, I and I. So just one and so far, yeah, I mean, I and I, I mean, I just, I missed, I didn't wanna miss more than one, so.
So don't schedule it.
Well, you could do that if you want. No, I didn't plan my, I didn't plan my trip around the planning commission meetings, I didn't, I could have, I guess I if I planned it right, I could have missed two.
Right. I I shouldn't miss anything, I I I might be in bed on the fifteenth, but. I I can do the simple. I can't make it.
It's um. It's really, it actually is seven o'clock there, my seven o'clock here might be seven o'clock there. We're pretty close. Other side, that would be. Yeah, so actually, I think I can call it. I probably will. Next time, okay, then we're gonna have a really long days, anyways, back to uh.
So what?
Same start. All favor?
All right.
All right.
Good job tonight, gentlemen.
That's probably.
We we actually went through five.
Four approved and then one.
We're rolling, dude, we're rolling.
Um.
Three of them were out of here.
Transportation, housing, economic development, so if it's on us, I'll be at the next select board.
You you'll be at?
Yeah, yeah, twenty four. Okay.
Have me listed as there, but I probably won't be.
Right, you better be.
Right, be able to.
I gotta be.
You better. I am before the next meeting in terms of.
You weren't solidating that.
You want.
The recommendations?
Yeah.
Um. My feeling is he's gonna wanna discuss it here before he starts consolidating.
Okay. You know, I'm gonna just do what you want.
Okay, they see here the next thing?
I think so, yeah.
Uh, Brian. Moving along very well. We know we wouldn't.